Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for Monday, July 27, 2020. Under Item 1, Call to Order 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Wygo?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Maq?
Here.
Kwame?
Here.
Veen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Under Item 2, Discussion Items, Item 2.1, Request for co-mingling of special event 2020 Dueling Duos in Town Square on August 6, 2020. Good evening.
Good evening, President Dot. Sandy and council members, I'm here today to bring yet another noise variance and special license for alcoholic beverages from Brick and Barley. Before we go into this one, I'd like to just give you just a little brief update. I have heard back from Jamie and Tricia Lunskey that they have canceled the Greenway takeover, and they also are pending the Rockin' Up North Fest that we saw last time. That one hasn't been announced, but they are looking at that one as well. But I wanted you to be aware of that current situation. This particular event is the Dueling Duos. It's with Brick and Barley. Sarah Horek is here too as well to discuss if you have any questions. But we are looking for a noise variance only because the event does go till 10:00, but they do have time after 10:00 where they will do cleanup for the square. And then the other is for co-mingling of the beverages.
Very good. Thank you for that introduction. Does anyone have any comments or questions related to the request for co-mingling?
I'm wondering if we could get an update on...
Ms. Doppler?
Thanks, Councilwoman Sandy. I'm wondering if we could get an update on the event that happened last Thursday, since it seems like it's going to be at the same venue, which is in Town Square, and then also the social distancing.
Sarah, did you want to come forward?
Sarah, good evening.
Members of the council. So we had Johnny Holmes last Thursday in Town Square. We actually kicked it out onto Third Street as well to expand out there, anticipating a larger crowd. There wasn't. It was quite a small crowd for that event last week. We're expecting an even smaller crowd for the Dueling Duo. That style of event, it's a seated event, so everyone who comes will bring their own chair, so it's a much smaller size of event. So we worked, I worked with Cheryl to have a safety plan in place. We had masks free of charge for anyone who wanted them at the gates. We worked with M&amp;K to have extra hand sanitizing stations set up, extra hand washing stations. So, you know, we did the best that we could to follow the recommendations that were in place. But for this event on the 6th, it will be quite a small event, and it'll just be within Town Square for that one.
So it sounds like you offered a lot of preventative measures, but how was it enforced?
Well, it was, you know, personal responsibility, so we're asking, you know, attendees to make that decision for themselves on what they're comfortable doing and what they're comfortable not doing.
So were you able to work with public health for the Johnny Holm concert, and is that something that you would do for this one as well?
We were not contacted by public health except through Cheryl to have a safety plan in place, and we did forward that on to her and got feedback that that was acceptable.
I can interject too, Sarah. They do have liaisons through our special event database. There are, I believe, four to five people from public health that received that email.
So, fair, just to be transparent, I did see pictures of the event that was held for the Johnny Holm Band last week, and there's people that were right up against the stage, no masks on, no social distancing. It didn't really look like it was set up with there's physical barriers or even that there is distancing going on for people going up to the bar to order. And so I guess I'm wondering, how would it be different this time around?
Well, like I said, that's a different style of event than what Dueling Pianos is. That's, this will be the second time that we've done it outdoors. Last summer, we actually did it out at Uland Complex at the softball fields, and it's a totally seated event, so I think people will be spaced out differently at that. And it's an all-request show, so people go up one at a time to make requests with, on paper copy, pieces of paper for the guys to play the songs from. So it'll be a little bit different style of event.
I have a question. This might be for Debbie. Was there any known spike or any kind of, was there any instances of infection from that concert?
Mr. Sandy and members of the committee of the whole, it usually takes 10 days to 21 days for us to see an event impact, but what I can tell you is since the 4th of July, we are seeing significant impact from social activities, from large group activities, from people not wearing masks, all kinds of community spread. Our numbers were very high over the weekend. We anticipated that because we did a testing event at UND, and we had 21 positive cases on Sunday. Those were reported to us on Saturday. I can't, we can't always point to this, any specific event, but what we can point to is the fact that when we do our contact tracing, we previously would have people report three to five close contacts. Now their close contacts are in the neighborhood of 15 to 20, and they often can't remember them or tell us who they are. They will say, "I was at this party, and there were 10 people there," and they don't know who they are. So my concern for special events like this is that they have to be conducted safely. Social distancing is absolutely necessary, controlling the crowds so that they maintain that distance, making sure your staff and attendees wear masks as much as possible. Those are all really important things to ensuring that our community is safe. I think if we want to ensure that we can open our schools and we can welcome students back from UND, we have to do everything in our power to make sure that we don't have sustained community spread. So that was maybe a long answer to your question, but it's what I'm seeing. It's what the Health Department is seeing in our work right now every day, and it's getting really challenging.
Ms. Swanson, I'm sorry, before you, can I ask a follow-up question?
Of course.
You say we're seeing cases due to large group activities. Unless we tell people what these activities are, it's hard to get people to understand. So in my perfect world, you would have, or the Health Department would have traced back to a specific event and can say, "Here's an event where people were gathered together as a large group, and we know that there was outbreak because of it, because we had seven people that tested positive nine days later, and they were all at the same event." Are there any examples that you can give us at all?
Mr. Sandy, I know that would be absolutely the best information that we could provide, but what we're seeing right now is that it's across all businesses. There's spread in the workplace, there's spread in social situations. And what we, we did find out that in, through our contact tracing, a number of people had attended a fair that was held at Home of Economy with food trucks. Now, we don't know if they were infected there, but we know many people attended it, so the likelihood of spread is pretty high. They decided to cancel their second event, knowing that information. Oftentimes, it will be a small party of 10 people gathering at a house, but no precautions taken, and then those 10 people either go to work in a nursing home, or go to work in a hospital, or attend a community event, and then we just see this continued sustained spread in the community. If we were to know, like foodborne illness, we have a specific place where it's happening, that we know the transmission is occurring there, we would identify that, but we haven't been able to identify a specific community event. But what you provide is what you promote, so I think you want to be careful about what you promote as a city in terms of events that might be a potential for spread to occur. A lot of businesses have been impacted, and what happens is close contacts then have to be quarantined for 14 days, and you can't test out of quarantine. And so what's happening is workforces are being impacted, and I can tell you that there's a couple of places that are really worried about their workforce being able to sustain in the community because they're starting to have a lot of people in quarantine, because they've had contact among their family members, among friends, mostly it's community spread. So I would stand in opposition to continuing to offer events like this, but I know it's a policy decision for you all to make, and we will try to provide the best information that we can.
Mr. Veen?
Ms. Swanson, I do have a couple of questions. With what you're seeing as, I guess, more cases coming up, are you able to keep up with all of your contact tracing that's needed?
Mr. Sandy, members of the committee, Mr. Veen, it's been really challenging lately. We've added more staff, but we try to give people every other weekend off. They work the full week, and then they work a weekend, and then the next week, so it gets to be a really long stretch. And we're trying to get people off every other weekend so they get a little bit of a break, but when you have 21 cases come in and 30 or 40 in Bismarck, that pulls away from our state capacity, so it all ends up on us to follow up with our own cases. And in fact, recently, we have discontinued the daily monitoring of contacts. We'll do the initial, but we are no longer able to follow up with each and every contact on a daily basis because of the capacity constraints. And at the same time, it's the same people that are also trying to help with testing events, with community education, and all the other activities that we're doing.
So, and maybe, this is a little bit, maybe getting a little bit further ahead, but not that far, when UND students come back, which we really hope and need to and want to keep them safe, will that responsibility of them being out in the public also fall on your shoulders with the Health Department? Because we will bring in significant greater volumes of people.
Mr. Veen, we are concerned about that. We've been working with UND, and they are trying to ramp up some additional assistance for testing and contact tracing, but a lot of their employees aren't back yet, so we don't have a full complement of additional people to help us. So yes, much of that will fall to the Health Department to ensure that all of the contact tracing is done there. UND is fully committed, though, to supporting their isolation and quarantine. So once a student tests positive and they enter contact tracing, the university is committed to making sure that those students are cared for during that timeframe. But it is going to be a large number of people coming into the community, and we do have concerns about that.
So I would understand, UND does have what I think is a fairly good program, what they plan to do to keep students safe, isn't that right?
Yes, that is correct.
But when they're off-campus, there's, there is not a specific requirement, or is there?
Well, I know that the university is doing a lot of education to ensure that students have a code of conduct that will keep them safe when they're off-campus as well as on-campus, but it's always hard to monitor, you know, activity in that age group. Where we are seeing the greatest increase in cases is the 20 to 39-year-olds. So the 20 to 29, 30 to 39 is where a lot of our cases are coming currently.
So I know we're getting outside the request that I think that was before us right now, so I appreciate that background information. That's very good. But we don't have a exact requirement within the city to wear face masks or to be social. We suggest it, right? We certainly see the recommendation. So having an event like this that doesn't have any specific requirement, there is really no enforcement because there's nothing to enforce except enforcing a recommendation. Is that right?
That's correct. In fact, Mr. Veen, if I could even interject, the particular event, the Fair Food at Home of Economy, I actually found that event online and reached out to the event organizers. It was one of their first public events, and shared our restart kits, our stickers, our masks, everything. They did not, they did not follow the usual channels to apply. So we see that as well, even, so the ones who are taking the initiative to really work through the plans and provide a plan are definitely different than those who may just have an event.
So, and I think that's what's challenging, either in this event, you know, until the city has a more specific policy...
Correct.
How do we enforce anything when you, with, when you don't have that? And it's, for me, it seems like we need to have a plan of some sort, even if the plan is, and I've talked to a few others, is to follow the state or have some requirement, but we have nothing out there. It's fairly just suggestive of what we should be following.
Mr. Fieland, and then Mr. Weber. Yes, Mr. Fieland?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Veen. I think it's more accurate to say, Mr. Veen, that we have guidelines. There is a, there's a plan that's attached to this event to follow the six-foot distancing. Masks are strongly encouraged. I think in this event, it is a seated event, so you should be able to space chairs out. And I know that if there's common folk, people like family or couples, they could probably sit closer together. So I think it's true to say that we do have guidelines. They follow our local, they follow our state, and follow our CDC guidelines, and it's about enforcement, because they're strongly suggested, we'll say, guidelines. It's really up to the event organizer to do the very best they can to enforce the guidelines as we enforce. This is a noise permit and co-mingling, but I think as part of the guidelines and following through, really, the event organizer, we hope they do the very best they can to enforce those guidelines. But I want to make sure everyone knows, we are following state CDC guidelines the very best we can in the city of Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Fieland. Mr. Weber?
Yeah, a question from Ms. Swanson and then some comments. Was there anyone from the Health Department at the Thursday night event?
Just one second, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Sandy, members of the council, and Mr. Weber, if I heard your question correctly, you asked if anyone from the Health Department was present at the last Thursday night's event. Is that correct?
Correct. Do we have any kind of monitoring of events like this from the Health Department?
We did not have any formal presence there because the food was by a vendor that was known to us, so there wasn't a need for the monitoring of the food. I was working late that evening, and I did stop by between 9:30 and 10:00, and what I saw was the lack of social distancing, very few masks, and no social distancing within the line of beverage where people were getting their beverages. And then a lot of what I would call co-mingling of people that were maybe not within a pod. They were moving around, visiting with different people face-to-face, and then, of course, talking loudly because the music was great and it was loud, and so people were having to face-to-face talk loud to one another. This event does, this proposed event does have a number of things that I think would eliminate those risks, but not completely. But certainly, a seated event is much safer. An outdoor event is safer than an indoor event. If the other things could be controlled, that would certainly provide a lot less risk, but it can't, it won't be no risk. There's a calculator right now that indicates crowd sizes and your current status of your cases in your community, and a crowd size of 250, it's about a 66% chance that someone there will, will be a case, is somebody who asymptomatic has COVID-19. So it's, it's not risk-free, but it certainly is much better than what I observed last Thursday night.
I believe that in my time on the council, I have voted in favor of every single request for co-mingling and for noise ordinance variance. I love these kinds of events, not just downtown, everywhere in the city. They are a quality-of-life matter that... They are a quality of life matter that I treasure greatly. It's been my hope for months that either by policy or by cultural practice, Grand Forks would somehow magically emerge as a kind of a model for behavior in these kinds of events so that we could move forward with more and more events, especially as we prepare for the students to come back and then after their return. Even, my hope has been that we would be able to return to hockey at the Ralph. However, my understanding anecdotally is that the health plan for Thursday night was not enforced, was not followed, and was in many ways just made a mockery of. I recognize that the event that's being requested now has a different set of circumstances. So I'm still torn about how to vote on the upcoming event, but I've got to tell you, if it is approved, it's my hope that there will be mechanisms in place to make sure that there is social distancing, that there is not just masks kind of passively being provided, but that there is demonstrated behaviors to indicate that people are doing what they can to make these events as safe as possible. Otherwise, I fear that we have to shut them down or we risk a terrible spike before the students come back. And then, my concern now goes beyond quality of life and having fun events like this, but just the basic economy of our community. If we don't have those thousands of students coming back, if we're not able to have them out in the community enjoying themselves, enjoying life, spending their dollars, then these smaller events will have been very costly to our community. So is there any mechanism beyond what seems to have been failed mechanisms this last Thursday night? Are there any mechanisms? Will there be paint or tape on the ground to create guidelines for social distancing? Anything that can make me feel better about the upcoming event than what I've heard about the last Thursday night event?
Ms. Horak?
Members of the council, Mr. Weber, we're definitely open to making some changes, to have some mechanisms in place like that, whether that's using bike barricades as sectioning off, which we've done in the past as well for lines. One thing we were hoping to do with this event was keep it within Town Square, but to make things like that happen, we'd probably have to kick it back out to Third Street like we did last week to have probably all of the beverage, all the vending out on the street with space to have those kinds of lines. So that would probably be one change we would have to make. But we're open to doing those kinds of things. This event, last year when we had it all at Uland, there were less than 300 people there. And we're expecting about that size of a crowd for this one, too. So, you know, we've held events in Town Square in the past where there have been 2,000, 2,500 people. So when you talk about 250 or 300 people in Town Square, it's really not, not that many people to try to space. So we can definitely put some of those things into place to do that.
Ms. Horak, I'm a big supporter of all the work you do in the community. Thanks for all you do for our community. Many private businesses have required mask-wearing. This is a private event. You're hosting it, right? This is a, will there be a charge for people coming into Town Square?
Yes, yes, it's a ticketed event.
So potentially, you could simply require mask-wearing the way many of our businesses in town are currently doing?
We could. It is an outdoor event, so we have some reservations with doing that. And we would rather have it be a recommendation, allow people to do that, make that decision themselves.
I have no further questions.
Yeah, Mr. Veen?
I like what you said, and I agree with you. I think outdoor events are the best events that we could have, and I think social distancing is a great way to do it. The question is, is if people decide not to social distance, then what happens? That would be the, that's the only dilemma that I have at this point, is how do we enforce if, in fact, people decide on their own not to follow the guidelines which we have?
Correct. And that's something that we deal with in our businesses as well. And for us, it's making those recommendations to people and we can step that up. This next week, as I mentioned, this is a much different style of event. The enforcement is hard. I think if you go into any bar or restaurant in town or in Grand Forks or across the country, I think enforcement is difficult. And if we get past some recommendations, maybe that would change. But right now, we can share those recommendations with our customers and we leave it up to them to have some, make that personal decision for themselves.
Ms. Mark?
As stated several times, I appreciate the idea of outdoor events and I appreciate the idea of being able to do those while the weather still allows, because I think we'll be going into a winter of very limited events for people to go to. And I think they will want to gather, they'll want to have activities. So I would like to get to a yes on these outdoor events while we still can do them. I am concerned when we see pictures that people are not social distancing. I am concerned when we hear that, you know, some of these guidelines aren't happening. Is there a way between you and the Health Department that we can mark places so that people social distance while they're in line, so that we encourage some of these behaviors, even putting different circles that are six feet apart from each other since this is more of a seated event? Perhaps if you've got more markers, we can get more of that. And I don't know if you would be willing to do some of those things, if we would, if public health would be willing to oversee and our information center oversee those and try to, between now and next week, come up with a comprehensive plan on what that would look like. I mean, my fear for saying no is that businesses are hurting and people want things to do. And if we don't provide things to do outside, they'll do it inside anyway. So I would like to see it done well. I think, to your credit, you're trying to do it the best you can versus just doing your own event without city approval. But I'm also concerned that we, as a council, would continue to vote in support of these things and then we see people that are not socially distancing. And it puts you in a difficult position because I don't know how you, as an owner or operator of an event like that, you or your staff can just go break some of those things up. That seems to me that we're putting you at a disadvantage as well.
I was, we were given some material from the city with some stickers. Couple of the beverage distributors have also given us ones that we've used in-house as well, so we'd be able to utilize, you know, some of those materials as well. Probably want to talk about how easily those come up off of concrete. I guess we haven't tested that theory out at the bar yet, but I think there's, you know, chalk, you know, we also use like chalk spray paint and things like that we've done in the past. So I think there's ways to mark out seating areas and things like that.
Mr. Weigl?
Just real quick, does, does this event fall within Grand Forks, the guidelines that we have? Yes, right? Does it fall within the governor's guidelines?
Yes, it does. And the staff report has all of the plans as, as, you know, according to those guidelines.
If these are the guidelines that have been set and we meet the guidelines, then I feel like the show should go on. I mean, these are the guidelines that have been set. If we take an event and we get to a point where we have guidelines, but yet we're not allowing events that follow the guidelines, we need to do something then. If we need to tweak guidelines later on, then I'm all for that. But if we meet guidelines with where we're at right now and it meets state guidelines, then, then I think that's what we base our decision off of. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve? Is there a second? Kyle? Mr. Cavami, thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Weber?
Yes, if, we're currently meeting guidelines, requirements, that's one thing. But my understanding is that Thursday night, there was a plan in place, the plan was not followed. Anecdotally, I've heard that Ms. Horak's own staff were not wearing masks. In fact, it feels like, feels like anecdotally, that the guidelines were made a mockery of. And here's, here's what I'm furious about, because I'm furious about this. That, that one party on a Thursday night with 600 or 700 people, when we were allowed 500 is the guideline, and now we're going to have one other small event, and if the guidelines are just made a mockery of each time, and we kill all the rest of our events through the rest of our summer into the fall. And we put all of that at risk, and not just events, but our local economy at risk because we have either weak guidelines or we're having health-approved plans and then we ignore those guidelines. This, this is deeply concerning to me and it's a huge risk for our, for our community, socially and economically.
Mr. Sandy, I'll just add one thing. I agree with you, Mr. Weber. If the guidelines aren't followed, then the event gets shut down. That's simple. If I, if I go speeding down to Merz Avenue and I get a ticket because I wasn't following the law or the guideline of 40 miles an hour as a speed limit, then I get a ticket. That's how it works. So if we have to have somebody there from public health to oversee the event and the guidelines aren't followed, then you shut the event down. I'm all for that. But I also think our economy is suffering right now as it is. I think people's public, mental health and other issues are coming about because we don't have an opportunity to be outside, to go to an event, to listen to music while you sit there. I'm in favor of these events, they are outside. I think there's more you can do and we have more opportunity that way. But like I said, if it's not following the guidelines, then I'm all for shutting it down.
My, part of my understanding is that the drink line, for instance, that there were staff who were not wearing masks, that there were law enforcement next to the line saying, "Look, if people don't want to social distance, there's nothing we can do." So the health plan, again, I'll use the word, it was just made a mockery of. It was not followed, there was no enforcement. And unless there's going to be some demonstrated way to follow the guidelines in a meaningful way, I'm furious that these one or two events can kill the rest of our season.
Mr. Weber, can you explain, when you say the rules were made a mockery of, you've said that three times now, are you implying that the Horaks made mockery of the rules or that they weren't doing what, what they could? Who, who made a mockery of the situation?
Several times, I said anecdotally what I'm hearing from people. So let me ask Ms. Horak, were your crew, were your staff, were they wearing masks? Were they practicing social distancing? Were they enforcing social distancing in any way?
I actually personally worked the gate, so everyone that came in, I, we had the recommendations down on the table and I covered those with people, pointed them out to them, what our recommendations were. Those were also posted at several places throughout the venue. We had masks and gloves available for our staff, again, recommended for them to use. That was their personal choice if they chose not to. Same at the gate, we had masks available free of charge for attendees if they would like when that was their choice.
There we have it. And actually, I mean, we can't condemn Ms. Horak. City Hall, when I walk in the door of City Hall, the first thing I see is a sign saying that masks are strongly encouraged. And yet, when I go inside, I don't see people wearing masks and the majority of council members aren't wearing masks. So I guess, when I use the word mockery, these are the kinds of things that I'm referring to, Mr. Sandy.
Mr. Sandy?
Yeah.
Just real quickly.
Please jump in before I do.
Maybe I'll give you a second. This is only coming forward because it's a co-mingling event, correct? So if, if Ms. Horak chose to have this event inside her establishment, this wouldn't be coming forward. So she could have this event, correct?
That's correct. And also, there are multiple events that happen that do not have alcohol.
And so, in my opinion, Ms. Horak is actually going above and beyond saying, "Let's have this outdoors instead of in my venue where it's an enclosed area." I'm, I'm much more comfortable with where Ms. Horak is at with this event. It's outdoors, we're expecting 200 to 300 people. And I think if it's following guidelines, I think we make our decision based on that. And if we get to a point where we start saying, "No, we're denying this, but hey, we, we understand it follows a guideline," in my opinion, we open ourselves up to some potential lawsuit someday. Because somebody's going to come back later on and say, "Well, you allowed this event to go on, it followed the guidelines. You're not allowing this event to go on, but it follows the guideline. Why am I being treated differently?" And so that's one of the things that I also look at, is what kind of liability do we have when guidelines are being followed?
Mr. Sandy, do you want me to respond or do you want to go first?
Please, Mr. Weber, go ahead.
Mr. Weigl, I absolutely concur. And I thank Ms. Horak for taking the steps to come to us. And an outdoor event is preferable to an indoor event. But my understanding is that there was a health plan approved by the Health Department and now we've heard from Ms. Swanson that the plan was not adhered to. So if we're talking about guidelines, that seems like an example of the guidelines not being followed. And, and you're right, this request is about co-mingling and a noise variance, but let's, let's face it, there's always context. And the context of this ask is that we're going through a pandemic. We have rising numbers in our community and we have thousands of students returning soon. We want them to be safe and we want the community safe from those students. So this isn't just about the black and white ask on tonight's staff report. It is being asked in that larger context. And, and those are the kinds of concerns that I'm trying to express here.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. For me, for lack of additional data and data points, it's very hard to say one way or another whether we should or shouldn't approve this. As Mr. Weigl pointed out, we have guidelines and recommendations and people have personal responsibility to follow the guidelines and recommendations. I think unless and until the city decides to use, whether the council or the mayor uses executive privilege to mandate masks in, on public property or things like that, I think the best we can do is ask people to follow the recommendations. I mean, for me, this is pretty simple. Who are the demographics of the people that are going to show up there? What are the odds that, or the likelihood that they catch the virus? And then from that, based upon their age group, what are the odds that we're going to overrun the hospital? I mean, that, that's what all the social distancing is for in the first place, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's why people started wearing masks.
They work in restaurants, they work in stores, they work in places where the entire community, children and the elderly are going to be exposed. They may be asymptomatic. But again, this is about a larger context and to pretend that, that context isn't relevant is just naive.
Oh. I think, again, Mr. Weber, if you weren't hearing me correctly, which you obviously weren't, we know how many respirators, for example, Altru has. We also know what the likelihood of someone being 38 years old, for example, if they get the virus, will actually use a respirator or need a respirator. So again, I go back to simply hard data of what are the odds that an event like this will actually overrun the hospital? Because that was the purpose of wearing masks and all this exercise in the first place, right? It was to make sure that we didn't overrun our hospital. That was why all of this started. I have yet to get intel on, I don't, to this day, know how many people are on respirators at Altru. I have no idea. It's very difficult to make logical decisions based upon what's going to happen at the hospital if we have no idea what's going on at the hospital. I, for one, think that I'm, I'm a big personal responsibility person. People need to take their own responsibilities. I understand, Mr. Weber, that bringing a large group together, if 66% likely, if you have 250 people, that somebody there will be asymptomatic and be a carrier, I certainly believe that that's a possibility, is probably, for all we know, it's, might even be more than that. Well, is that event going to overrun our hospital? If somebody would get up and tell me, if somebody in the medical profession would get up and say, "Hey, if this happens, that happens, and we're going to overrun Altru Hospital," I would say absolutely under no circumstances should we allow an event like this. That's very easy. That's very easy. Problem is, nobody provides that data. We get so little data about what cause and effect related to COVID. It's all speculation and hearsay and concern and hyperbole. Lots of hyperbole, Mr. Weber. And so, I'm a data guy. I wish I could get more data from our Public Health Department, and from the State Health Department, and from the Federal Health Department. I wish we could actually get more intel on what events are causing outbreaks, and how is that causing an effect on our hospital? Unless and until we get that data, it's all, we're all guessing at things. And so, I, for one, I know that there are cases of COVID in our community. There certainly are. I'd love to know what the likelihood is that I will catch it going out not socially distancing and ultimately end up in the hospital on a respirator. That would be amazing data to know. Mr. Veen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple. On the guidelines, we talked about that. What authority do we have to shut anybody down if they don't follow guidelines? Do we have authority to actually do that?
I trust you want me to answer that? The authority would be through the issuance of the license, the permitting process. So if you'd have, you know, if you put in a condition on the permit, and the permit condition isn't satisfied, then the permit can be withdrawn or terminated, is the way you'd craft it. You'd put a condition on the permit or the license that you're issuing.
But if I could, nobody could actually go out there and say, "You're not following it. You're shut down right here, and you got to close shop."
Yeah, the practical reality is is that you've got a proof problem, right? That's the reality that you're going to face is, how are you going to prove that? And you're going to run into a situation where somebody says, the party that has the licenses, "I did comply." And how are you going to document and prove whether they did or did not under those set of circumstances? Or if it was an inadvertent error or something they didn't anticipate? All of those things come into play and become a real problem with the enforcement of that condition.
So does this put every business that has an event like this at risk? If they don't follow, that they could eventually be found and lose their licenses?
I'm not suggesting that, because I don't know what everybody's license or permit would provide. I just don't, I don't know. But if you were going to impose a condition, right? And you wanted to say you have to follow these guidelines, I think you could impose that condition on a per- I just don't know what the answer is, you know, citywide.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think the business, if the business is selling a ticket, that's a contract in and of itself. If there's guidelines that are listed, the business can shut the event down. Is that correct, Mr. Gostad?
The business certainly can take whatever action they want to take with respect to their own action. I thought the question was directed at what the city could do with respect to a licensed operation.
And it was. You answered my question, thank you.
Ms. Mock, comment?
I guess that was to Mr. Weigl's point. If we issue this permit, and then police notice, people in attendance notice that things aren't being followed, is that something that can be shut down in the moment? Because my concern is that you hear about these things after the fact. And then, from the public health standpoint, people have already co-mingled and potentially spread the virus. And I guess a follow-up to that would maybe be, can we approve, if we approve the permit, and then we hear later it wasn't adhered to, can we levy a fine? Can we decide not to approve permits in the future to that business? Do we have anything administratively that we, as a city, can do?
Yeah, I'm not aware that if you're going to impose some sort of penalty or sanction like that, you'd have to have some ordinance-based theory. And I'm not aware that you'd be able to issue a penalty with respect to a license in that regard, particularly without engaging in some due process hearing right to be able, for that person to be able to defend themselves against the allegations. So that'd be the first problem. The other problem is that if you're going to do this, you better than also have a fairly detailed mechanism as to how you're going to go through this process. Because you can say that we're going to, you know, if the guidelines aren't being followed, the license is going to be terminated. Well, how do you do that? And who makes that decision? And how are you going to give the businessperson that has that license the opportunity to be able to defend themselves against those allegations in the moment? For example, I've been thinking at 11:30 at night, how are you going to do that in the moment? There isn't a court or a judge that's going to be able to, excuse me, to hear that type of allegation. So you got to, there are just some serious pragmatic problems that the city faces in this circumstance.
For me, I'll go back to risk. We could all stay home. Everyone in our community could stay home for 14 days, and we could put a big fence around the city and keep everyone out. If we're not going to do that, I struggle with, unless Mr. Weber or Mr. Weigl, Ms. Mock, we could tell them that they have. We're providing recommendations. When recommendations, by their nature, are only recommendations. I mean, and so, when the concern is that people aren't following the recommendations, well, they're only recommendations. They aren't requirements. We can tell them that we have to require, "Sir, you have to require people to wear masks." We could say that, right? We could do that. Again, I continue to try to determine what the goal of our community is related to COVID. Is it to make sure that no one in our community gets the virus? If that's the case, then everyone has to go home, and we'll all tell, talk to everyone for the next few weeks. If the goal is to keep from overrunning our emergency room in the hospital, that's completely different. Because then you start getting into evaluating risk. For me, it's easy to evaluate risk if I'm given data. I'm not given any data, so it's impossible to evaluate risk. Here's what I know. We only have so many people in our community that have the virus. We're asking people to follow guidelines. We're asking people to follow the recommendations. I think Brick and Barley, they don't want any more trouble than we want. But I think we can all agree, right here, right now, that there will be people within six feet of one another standing in line to get a beer. There is no doubt. And I guarantee, at least two of those people will not be wearing masks unless they are told they have to. So how do you want to deal with this? Again, I don't know the answer to it. What I do know is, I know human nature. I know people, and I know I like to go out and drink beer, too. And I get how it gets. I want to get to the front of the line, get a beer, and go back and watch the concert, or whatever. So I get it. What are we trying, are we trying to keep everyone in our community from getting COVID? If that's our goal, we should just deny this request. If we recognize that we can't do that, well, then what's the next best thing? I don't know.
Mr. Sandy.
Yeah.
I just want to remind people that this is only before us for a special event permit due to the fact that it's asking for a noise variance and co-mingling. This event could be held anywhere else inside with zero oversight from the City of Grand Forks and the City Council. That is the only reason that this is in front of us. Not because it's an event. I've seen weddings on Facebook the last two weeks. I've seen other events going on in the community. It is only in front of us because it's a noise variance and co-mingling. You take out those two things, and they put that in their building, they can do what they want.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Veen. Last comment, and then we're going to just vote and move on.
Dana, I agree with especially your last comment on data. I think that's what makes this so difficult for all of us, is we've been talking about it. Mr. Weber had the group, and we were going to do all of this testing, and we were going to run some databases. We met with businesses. We're trying to get this whole process going. The intent of that, for me, was so we could have data to make good decisions. And so, we're all stuck in this place right now is that we don't have the really sound data that we can have to make good decisions. So we're having these kinds of discussions. And I think if there's something that I was hoping we could do is be ahead of the curve when it comes to data, and that we would be able to proceed with some type of process by which we could look at what makes sense to us. So here, each of us are actually, in some ways, acting emotionally because, again, we don't have the facts, I think, before us. And so, we're using that as a basis for making our decisions. And it isn't just emotion, because there's all kinds of data. I mean, we could talk about the data about hospital beds. We could also talk about the data about people dying. That's really important, too, not just hospital beds. There's so many different ways to look at and evaluate the implications of this policy. And as long as this is only guidelines, and the City of Grand Forks is making the decision that we don't want to have rules, we just want to follow guidelines, this is what I've said, this then is our policy. Our policy is only to have guidelines and not to, and we don't have a true means of enforcing it. That's the other thing. A guideline is a guideline. Not everybody has common sense. Or people have a different view of it that we might just disagree with. This is really a true dilemma for us, about how do we handle this? And even though I know it's about this one event, it really triggers a much bigger issue than just the one event. And that's why we're having this. So I think we need to carry this kind of conversation on beyond this one meeting that we're having today and see if we can get together and find out what really does make sense. Because the last thing I want to see us do is shut this community down again. We can't afford to do it. Economically, we can't afford to do it. And is there a way to be able to put a plan in place? And the other thing is, okay, once we get to 200 COVID cases a day, will we finally do something? Is there going to be a trigger point where we will actually do something and put something in place? Because what we have now is a free-for-all. And that's where I think we could spend our time better than what we're probably doing now, is look at what that takes. But I agree with you. It comes down to where's the data? What's that going to support? What is our objective when it's all said and done? How do we put a plan together to make sure we meet that objective? There's just so many questions out there that are unresolved that need to be addressed. So that's my comment.
Yeah, I agree. Ms. Mock?
I couldn't agree more. I think that we, as a council, as a mayor, as a city, need to come together and decide what our goals are. For me, one of the biggest goals is being able to have schools open. That shuts down our entire economy if we can't have kids in schools. It's a huge safety net, and it's a huge risk right now that we're sending our kids into. And I don't know if we have plans in place, if we have a surge. I don't know what we would do. I don't know what we'd do for businesses if we have to shut businesses down again. And we see cases increasing. And then we get a question like this. And yes, much of it is about personal risk. And like, "I didn't go to Thursdays. I won't go to this one." It's not a risk I want to take. But I also don't want to prevent it from other people while they can do it outside and more safely than inside. I would feel much better about this if we would amend it so that we have public health review the safety plans between now and next week, so that it can have a comprehensive plan that our public health can feel better about, that it can have clear markings on distancing, both in lines and in seating. It sounds like a very different event, which I think could be done well and could be a testament to how well we can do events outside so that we can approve other ones in the future, which I would rather have the success rather than be bitter about an event that did or didn't accomplish that in the past. I would rather give people the opportunity to exceed expectations. But I do think that we need to, as a city, define our goals and work backwards from our goals so that we know when we hit a certain trigger, we start talking about enforceable regulations. And they're tough conversations. But, and I don't know what those triggers are, but I think without putting them in place, we'll see creep of cases and creep where we just won't notice it anymore. And then we'll always be playing catch-up rather than proactively making decisions. And I would like to proactively make plans and decisions.
Mr. Weigl?
Before Johnny Holmes occurred, and Cheryl, maybe this is for you, what is the process? If I want to have an event at Town Square similar to Ms. Horack's, what is my process?
Thank you, Councilmember Weigl. I can tell you that we have an online application. And the event organizer, many times, will contact our office to talk about the particulars. And we will refer them to that application. It's quite extensive. And depending upon what they want to do, there are different sections. This particular event came in on the 16th of July. And it went through all the different processes, as well as we then, at the point where I got it into our office, asked for a COVID-19 plan. That plan was then given to me the following day. I put it into the database, and I processed it with the police, the fire, public health, every city department, as well as we do five different external departments, such as Convention Visitors Bureau, Options for Handicapped Accessibility, and, oh golly, I can't think off the top of my head here. But we have many different channels. So this has been processed, and it was sent out immediately for all of those different people. Each of the categories have, as I said before, for all of those different people. Each of the categories have, as I said before, four to five people underneath them. If there's any questions, they, they typically will call me, or they will hit no on their approval.
And so I'm, I'm assuming it's similar for when Johnny Holmes was here, correct?
That's correct. In fact, every single event is done the same way.
Okay. Did public health respond to the event for Johnny Holmes? To you directly?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Did they do that for this event?
No, I have not.
Okay.
I shouldn't say respond. This, I have not heard from anyone in this event. I have heard, you know, is there a plan? And I'll say, yes, it is. It's on the database.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sandy, if I may?
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
So was there a, a health, was there a plan approved by the, a health board, by the Department of Health for the Johnny Holmes concert?
Mr. Sandy, members of the council, Mr. Weber, we did, I did not personally approve the COVID plan for the Johnny Holmes concert, but I did see it on the Facebook page. And I did see the language there that indicated it had been approved by the city. However, I didn't have concerns until I got to the event, and that, that was my concern when I, I didn't see all of the elements being carried out. I will say, though, that the staff serving both Half Brothers and Brick and Barley were wearing masks. I heard that said that they were not, and I just want to clear the error that they were. But because of my concerns about this event coming up, I asked Cheryl if I could see the plan, and I reviewed it, and I indicated the things that I felt were missing. They have since been added. Security guards needed to be wearing masks. Social distancing in the line needed to be ensured, and the crowd size needed to be maintained so that they could be socially distant. Those things were added to the plan. I would echo what has been said here before, which is, it's important that it's enforced. So having a plan is one thing, enforcing it is another. And so I agree with much of what's been said. And I do also want to respond to one other thing, two other things that have been said that I feel I have something to contribute. One is that the health officer does have power to prevent activities from happening in our community if they are to be determined to be a public health hazard. The last time I recall that occurring was in 1986, when we had a measles outbreak, and we canceled lots of things. Measles has a very, very high infection rate. The other thing that I wanted to add, and I'm, I know I'm probably not supposed to do this, because Altru should be able to provide you with data, but it is very complicated, very complex, and always changing. But as of 11 o'clock this morning, they had seven COVID patients, three people on ventilators. So when you're looking for hospital data, it's very difficult to interpret it, but it's there, and it needs to be taken in context. I also heard earlier this week, or last week, excuse me, that Bismarck's, one of their hospitals, their COVID unit was full. They have a lot of cases in Bismarck and in Mandan. And they were on the cusp of potentially transferring patients to another hospital. So while I hear a lot about preventing hospitalizations, that was our initial goal. Now we're trying to preserve the workforce. So we have people who can work in the hospital and not be on quarantine, and take care of anyone who comes in and needs that care, or long-term care, or childcare, or teachers. We need, or our critical infrastructure, we need everybody protected. So I just wanted to make those few points, as well as answer your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Sorry, Ms. Dockler, did you have something to add?
Jeanie, did you make an amendment to that motion, or propose one, or was that just?
No. I'm sorry, did you, Katie, or Jeanie? Ms. Mock?
I guess I would be interested in, well, I guess Ms. Swanson said that she did review the plan, and her concerns did include those. Are you satisfied with the current plan? Is there more that you'd like to see in there for a safety plan?
Mr. Sandy, members of the council, Ms. Mock, I think the plan is solid. It is according to the green level, which our state has been designated as. We do not currently meet the criteria for green level. Most of our state does not, because we have not been in a case, in a situation of 14 days of declining cases. So I think that will need to be reviewed, either at a state level or a county level, that we ought to be considering that we're at yellow or green. But I think this plan, as it is written, is written according to the guidelines, and you're absolutely correct. You're only authorizing two things this evening. We do not have the power to approve or disapprove plans. If they're recommendations, they're guidelines. I, I feel like the plan has included everything that is recommended. It's just the enforcement and carrying it out that is the concern.
Very good, then. With that, I mean, I'm, I'm prepared to vote, but I'll, I'll point out one, one quickly. It's a false dichotomy to think that we either have an absolute free-for-all, or we have a total lockdown. We have points in between that, that we can embrace to, to make the safer self. I'm hoping that it's a successful event, and then I'll be watching, and that will guide future votes on, on activities at this point.
I would agree, Mr. Weber. It's all about assessing risk. We're assessing risk and determining whether to approve this, and people in our community need to assess their risk and take their own personal.
Yes, yes, but as a community, we also have to assess the risk to our overall economy and, and our social well-being. And that's, that's a pretty important data point.
I totally agree.
And so far.
I completely agree with you. You and I are on the same page. I just, I think our tolerance for risk is different. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, Mr. Veem.
Can we go, I mean, I think we have two different items here. Could we also, though, as a council, start looking at the, the data and the plan that we also talked about, and put that in motion tonight also, without, beyond just what we're talking here? I don't necessarily say it needs a formal motion, but if we can have agreement that we need to get together and talk about this more, I think that's critically important, beyond just this decision. Then if that takes a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion along that line, or else we just have concurrence to, to move forward.
Mr. Phelan?
I, I think the consensus here is that we should come up with some sort of guidelines for a community and data points that allow us to make decisions, whether it's numbers of new cases, or numbers of hospitalizations, or whatever the criteria might be. I think that would help us understand the triggers, in addition to following the state guidelines.
Council President Sandy, I think that's a very good point, and I, and I think it's timely. We are working on behalf of Mayor Bochensky on a, with, continuing to work with our institutional partners, that's Altru, UND, Grand Forks Air Force Base, Grand Forks County, on a, a strategy, an integrated strategy, which includes testing. And so Mark Schell from Praxis Strategies is helping, you know, all the groups put together a strategy, knowing that, you know, I should say, also Grand Forks Public Schools, I missed them, so we can move forward. So you'll, I think you will be seeing, it's timely, you'll be seeing that in early August, in, in advance of UND and the Grand Forks Public Schools coming back. But I'll put a big asterisk on this whole thing. We can have lots of plans and lots of strategies. Let's be frank, our country is a little woefully behind in being able to test. So we can, we can say a lot of things that we should be doing, that were not going to be accomplished. So what we've asked Mr. Schell to do is to come up with a, a reasonable way to random test different groups, so that at least we have some sort of forecast of what's going on out there. And hopefully then we have some follow-up capacity, whether it's at Altru, or the state, or UND, or somewhere where we can actually get analytics back and get it back sooner rather than later. So I think we're putting together a plan, I think, again, I think this, like any town USA, or any state in this union, we are struggling with testing, and we're struggling with analytics, and we're struggling with turnaround, which really is hampering this country. But we're going to try to put together a local plan to bring forward to you. So, and you should all know, all the partners are really working hard so that we can come, all come to the table, and we can present back to the city council on this matter. And you spoke a lot about Altru, and, and we wanted to, you know, just give me the answer, right? And so what we've gotten to is, maybe it's a green, yellow, red strategy, because sometimes it's not about the number of ICU beds, it's about how many nurses they have there. And so what we finally have come to the conclusion with Altru Health System, just give us the color, because we know it's very nuanced, and we just need to know kind of how you're looking this, today, and this week. And it might be nurses, it might be the number of ICU beds. So that's kind of where they're at, too. So we'll, we'll have a strategy, we're working on it. So I think it's a very good point, Mr. Sandy, and we hope to deliver, not only for the city of Grand Forks, but for the entire community.
Mr. Phelan, I think unless you elicit input from the council, you could go through a lot of work and bring a plan forward that we disagree with.
You could. And, and I think tonight's, that's a very good point, Mr. Sandy. And you're the best questioner out there, too. I think what this conversation has really highlighted is we don't know what we don't know. And so I think we, I think I get a sense of what you want. You want data, you want some analytics to at least help reduce the risk, or at least know what kind of risk we have so we can make decisions. And so I think implicitly, because we always listen to what your needs are, I think we'll be able to deliver that. And I think here's the goal. We're going to say, we should probably be here, but we can only get to here, because these are the realities of the world. And we've even pushed on Altru that people want data, they want analytics, give us something. So I think we're going to deliver back, so that you can edit and add to that plan.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Veem, does that satisfy you, at least for tonight?
Well, I think it does for tonight.
Great. Excellent. So, yes, Ms. Mock?
Do we have at least a verbal that the enforcement will happen at the event if we approve to the best of abilities?
Councilwoman Smack, I think to the best of our ability. You know, we can put some other plans into place for this one, including the additional signage, if we want to add in some barricades of that nature. But to Mr. Sandy's point, it's, some of it is outside of our control, unless we have people at every, every spot at every moment, which I can't afford to staff. I don't think the police department wants to be staffing that. I guess I could leave that to the chief, but, so to the best of our ability, we can add a couple extra things in, but there's just the, the human interaction that we might not be able to control as well.
Mr. Phelan?
I think this is a co-mingling event, so I think we're going to have two law enforcement officers from Grand Forks PD. And so, not to have Chief Nelson come up here, but maybe prior to, at the Monday meeting, they're there for, you know, other purposes, but maybe there's a way they could do really nice neighborhood policing and, and help support, since I think there, I think it notes, Cheryl, two police officers are there, because it is a co-mingling event. So we'll have Chief Nelson ponder with whomever's going to get assigned, about what they could do to help support, you know, above and beyond the law enforcement aspect of an event.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Dockler descends. Thank you. Very good discussion tonight. Well, item two. Fortunately, item two has 18 parts. 2.2, Future Special Assessment Area Projects. Part A, Project 4704 dot 14, District Number 14, Flood Protection, 2019 Annexations. Ms. Swanson, good evening.
Hi, President Sandy. All of these projects are from, are, all of these projects are from projects that have been before council before, and they all have future special assessment areas, and they are now being applied to new annexations that did take place mostly in 2019. And these annexations become legal in February of 2020. And we do this every year, try to keep up with all the annexations that are taking place. So if there's any questions, you can pull out one specific project, or if there's no questions, that's fine, too.
Any comments or questions? There are a motion to approve the annexation by Weigle, second by Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Project 5408.2, District 59.2, paving of South 20th Street from 44th to 47th Avenue South.
Was that for all of them, or one?
That was for A.
I, I made my motion for all of them together.
Oh, my apologies. We would have to read them all into the record.
If we can do that, that'd be great to.
Certainly.
I don't see any issue with them. I, I'm not sure if anybody else does, but might save us.
Sure.
From a committee point of view, could we just approve of all, because we're not actually approving until we go to council?
That is correct. We can approve, technically approve them all. We just have to read them all in for the record. As long as, is there anyone that has any issue with reading them all in and approving them? Seeing none. Okay. So I read in B already. C, Project 5431.2, District 139.2, Street Lighting Southern State's First and Third Editions. D is Project 5702.5, District 607.5, paving of 47th, or 40th Avenue South from 20th Street to Rumly Road. E is Project 5940.4, District 620.4, paving South 20th Street, 40th Avenue South to 44th Avenue South. F, Project 5988.4, District 627.4, paving 40th Avenue South, South 20th Street to South Washington Street. G is Project 7435.2, District 691.2, paving Rehab North 42nd Street. H, Project 7436.1, District Number 518.1, Sanitary Sewer, North 62nd Street and Gateway Drive. I, Project 7531.1, District 695.1, paving 47th Avenue South from the South End drainway to South 20th Street. J is Project 7588.2, District 530.2, Sanitary Sewer, North 39th Street and North 36th Street and 20th Avenue North. K is Project 7648.2, District 535.2, Stormwater Pond, North 36th Street and 20th Avenue North. L is Project 7650.2, District 536.2, Storm Sewer, North 36th Street, North 39th Street and 20th Avenue North. M, Project 7653.2, District 332.2, Water Main, North 39th Street and 27th Avenue North. N, Project 7654.1, District 705.1, paving and streetlights on North 39th Street. And last but not least, O, Project 7800.1, District 718.1, paving 47th Avenue South from South 20th Street to Columbia Road. Moving on. Item 2.3.
Nicely done.
Thank you. Item 2.3, Grand Forks Renaissance Zone Project Number 67, GF67, 7, Midtown Kmart Redevelopment. Anyone want to discuss the Renaissance Zone project? I can. Ms. Richards?
Sorry about the delay. Andy was going to do this, but had to get home and let his wife get to work at Altru. So here I am. This is for a Renaissance application that was received for improvements at the former Kmart in Midtown Mall. As your staff report says, they're going to fit up that space for storage in, in the main portion of the building, but additional retail in the front portion. The property is in the process of being replatted right now, so approval would be contingent on that, which is scheduled to be completed next month. And your staff report also notes that LLC is in the process of being formed. That's expected to occur this week. So before it goes for final approval at council, we hope to have the name of the LLC. But again, contingent on that entity receiving the certificate of good standing. Other than that, the project does comply with Renaissance requirements, and so it'd be eligible for a five-year property tax exemption on the, the value added by the improvements, and then a state income tax exemption for the first five years as well.
Ms. Richards, if I recall correctly, this, the Replot received preliminary approval at planning and zoning already this month, correct?
It's scheduled for final approval in August.
Final approval in August. Excellent. Any other comments or questions, Renaissance Zone?
I move approval.
Mr. Cavami moves approval, second by Weigle. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Richards, for coming to the meeting tonight. 2.4, Wastewater Treatment Plant, Microbubble Flotation at the wastewater treatment plant. Apparently there are light, significant numbers of microbubble flotation devices?
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Sandy, members of the committee. Tonight, we were just asking for two kits to replace the skimmers, actually at these MBFs at the wastewater treatment plant. This would normally come to you for approval, but we did have one of those units go down about a week and a half ago, right after I submitted this. So I did authorize the staff to order that, and we'll use one of the other units until we can get this one back up and running. So the two kits are just a sole source item that I need to bring before you, because it is an asset of the city.
Okay. Any comments? Got to clean the sewage. Moved by Weigle. Second by Dockler. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 2.5, Project 8236, Award for Bids for Greenway Bike Path Asphalt Repair. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, committee members. This project is scheduled to add a inch and a half layer of asphalt over a 1.8 mile stretch of our Greenway bike path. This last came before the council on July 6th, where plans and specifications were approved. Since then, we held a bid opening last week. We received two bids, ranging from approximately $125,000 to $158,000. The low bidder was Strata Corporation, and their bid was within 1% of the engineer's estimate. So we're, we're very pleased with the bidding environment for this project. If approved, this bid, excuse me, this work will be completed this year. And if weather cooperates, we'll hopefully have some grass, the reseeding along the edge complete as well, but that may carry over to next spring. So with that, we are recommending award to the low bidder, Strata Corporation, in the amount of 125, $125,350.
Any questions? Move, comments, move by Veem.
Second.
Second by Cavami. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 2.6, Project 869, Cost Participation and Maintenance Agreement for Shared Use Path on University Avenue. Mr. Cranko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, and members of the committee. This is a standard agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. It's for the use of $290,000 for construction only for the shared use path, construction on University Avenue from 48th to the Park Manor Mobile Home Park. This is the last piece that would finish up the loop for this bike trail. Overall, the $290,000, it would be a 80% federal and 20% local match. However, there are a number of ineligible items, such as construction engineering and testing, that the city will have to pay 100% for. Overall, it's a fairly standard agreement, and staff is recommending approval.
Mr. Weigle?
Mr. Cranko, I do have a few questions for you. I've heard some, from some people that live in that area. I'm not so sure there's full support, because people are losing chunks of their yard. I think it affects probably four residents somewhere in there that face University Avenue. Do we have a 10-foot bike path or sidewalk anywhere else in the city where people have lost pieces of their front yard? Because we're going from that 5-foot to that 10-foot.
Overall, with this location in particular, there are, I believe, four properties on the east end of this project where the sidewalk is not one foot off the property line, like it would be in other places in town. One foot off the property line is typically where we end up setting the sidewalk. So in this instance, we would potentially be looking at putting this shared use path closer to where it would be standardly placed. We still have not yet gone through the, the public input phase for this project yet. However, we have had some staff do some early communication with some of the property owners in the area, and trying to get a, a general feel for their thoughts, and how we might be able to mitigate some of their concerns as well.
Perfect. So there is an opportunity that maybe we take that, you know, instead of two and a half feet on each side. half feet on each side, we could do maybe one foot on one side and four feet towards the street. So there is an opportunity there.
That is correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Good question. I think you have to worry or be concerned about the utilities and those sorts of things, of course, which our engineering department knows better than we do, but hopefully they can find a happy medium in there. Is this going, does this go on the north side of University or is it on the south side?
This would be on the north side.
On the north. Any other comments? Moved by Veen. Second by Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.7, Project Number 8127, consideration of property acquisition for future railroad crossing safety improvements. Follow-up to our previous meeting.
That is correct. At the previous committee, the whole meeting, we ended up discussing an information-only item regarding our quiet zone reaffirmation. As part of that, we ended up looking into the particular crossing at University Avenue and the Mill Spur here relatively close to downtown. Overall, there is a property that is currently up for sale and if we can get it on either the screens in front of everybody so they can kind of see the aerial image. The property that is currently for sale is 1002 University Avenue, which is located right here. As you can see, this driveway is very close to the railroad tracks themselves overall based on GIS measurements. This driveway is approximately seven feet away from the nearest track. If we desired to do some kind of improvement for this crossing, such as gates or medians, this driveway would likely be impacted and the city would likely have to do some kind of property acquisition. In this particular case, this property is currently up for sale and so this may be an opportune time for the city to make an acquisition. Overall, you can end up seeing that the adjacent empty lot here, this lot is actually owned by the Red River Habitat for Humanity. And since this lot, we would likely need to, at the very least, demolish the driveway, potentially demolish the house. We could look at options in the future as to property negotiation with BNSF. Typically, they like to have a buffer strip next to their railroad tracks for safety and for maintenance purposes. And so we may be able to trade or sell some of this land if we subdivide it out for some other land that the city may desire. And at that point in time, the lot itself may not be redevelopable and we may want to consider potentially working with the adjacent landowner for their purposes as well. And with that, want to answer any questions?
Any comments or questions? Yeah, Mr. Veen.
What is the air for motion of this one?
At this point in time, staff is recommending that City Council direct city staff to enter into negotiations to purchase this property. Overall, the property is going, has an asking price of under, just under $80,000, I believe.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Veen. Is there a second? Second by Weigl. Other discussion? I personally think that there's no better time to acquire this property and even if we end up replating, making the lot for Habitat for Humanity bigger, get some infill housing and some affordable housing in town, I think it's a great opportunity for all of us and certainly adding another quiet crossing downtown would be great. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Weber, did you have a comment? Okay, moving on. 2.8, approved plans and specifications for Project 7957, 32nd Avenue South intersection improvements from I-29 to South 20th Street. Mr. Cranko.
This project itself is a fairly long-awaited safety project from 32nd Avenue. In the past, we've had a number of intersections along this corridor that have been on the North Dakota Department of Transportation's High Crash Urban List, which lists the top 50 urban intersections with, throughout the state. Primary cause for some of those instances and some of those more severe accidents are the negatively offset left turn lanes, which what that means is that you can't necessarily see around a vehicle in the opposing traffic lane. This project entails realigning a number of those left turn lanes along this corridor. It also includes installation of flashing yellow arrows, some new mast arms to account for that, red light confirmation indicators, as well as additional left turn lanes on Columbia, so that we will have dual left turns at all legs of the intersection of Columbia. Overall, it's estimated to be about a $4.3 million project and we're, would be receiving approximately $3.9 million in federal aid. With that, staff is recommending approval of the plans and specs.
Any comments? I have a comment. I think the DOT is short-sighted, not putting in the right turn lane at 20th, but that's just my opinion. Any other, anybody want to approve the plans and specs? It's going to be great. Moved by Dockler. Second by Mark. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.9, preliminary engineering agreement with NDOT for Project 8243, North Fifth Street from Chip Seal from Gateway Drive to Demure's Avenue. Mr. Cranko.
Overall, this is a standard agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. They're looking to start doing some design work on a chip seal project on North Fifth Street. Currently, they're planning on doing a mill and overlay on the street for completion this summer. The chip seal is being planned for 2022. This is a standard agreement, which essentially states that if the city decides to terminate, that we will end up repaying the North Dakota Department of Transportation for their design costs. With that, staff is recommending approving the agreement.
Mr. Cavami, move approval. Moved by Cavami. Second by Weigl. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 210, thank you, Mr. Cranko. Permanent versus interim station for Project 8217, interim sanitary lift station number 48 and force main. Mr. Walker, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. So back in May, council approved an agreement with Firm of WFW for design, bidding and construction administrative engineering services to construct lift station 48 as an interim station. Lift station 48 is proposed in an area south of 62nd Avenue and east of Washington Street. Currently, this one square mile is completely undeveloped and the station would serve that entire one square mile. What was considered, when the agreement was brought forth, was a lower-cost submersible station that was smaller barrel and a wooden control building and would be constructing this in lieu of constructing a permanent station, which would be a more expensive station, have a double-sided lift station barrel, wet/dry, what it's called, and a more, larger permanent control building that would likely be either precast concrete or masonry. The advantage of constructing the interim station was that it would be a lower capital investment at the time. The intent would be then that the term, the interim station would be a temporary in nature and would be out there as that area develops and at some point in time, when the area gets about 50% developed, the flow coming into the station would be such that the interim station could no longer reliably take that much wastewater and then a permanent station would be built. So when the engineering agreement was approved back in May, it was questioned whether it made sense to construct the interim station or if a permanent station was built. Staff indicated at that time that we'd look into that further and the intent of coming to you tonight is to tell you what we've found out. We've asked the Firm of WFW to evaluate that and Dale Bergam is here tonight to give you the results of his study. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Dale Bergam from WFW.
Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening. I'm trying to make this quick for you guys to move on so we don't have to... Mark talks a little bit about some of the basics of it, but basically, planned service areas is one square mile or about 640 acres, bound, as you can see, from 62nd Avenue on the north, Maryfield Road on the south, South Washington on the west and Belmont Road on the east. Talked a little bit about an interim submersible station. Typically, we look at flows in there 100 to 500 gallons per minute, serves about a half a section of land or about 320 acres. Typical submersible stations have a wet well, which is the, let's see if I can get the arrow, structure right here, which on the picture is this guy right out in front. Basically, the pumps are on a guide rail system. It's got a wet well, typically about a six-foot depth, total operating depth from the inlet of the pipe down to the bottom. So that's kind of our operating range. There's a valve structure underneath the control building, which is this little guy over here where we put check valves and stuff that need servicing and up above is the controls for it. Permanent wet/dry station, again, higher flows typically 300 to 3,000 gallons per minute. We have some higher ones that flow even more than that, serves about a section of land without any problems. Typically, it's 24-foot diameter station, round station that's divided with a wall down the center, which you can see in the picture here. And then we have what we call the dry side, which we put the pumps in the bottom, spiral stairs to access down to them, and the wet side, which then is about 10 feet deep of operating level in here. With this, basically, permanent ventilation's installed, so as soon as they turn on the lights to access the station, the ventilation turns on, so we got good ventilation for Some of the things with the interim submersible station is pump access abatance. Basically, in the wintertime, it becomes difficult working conditions. We have safety hatches on here, which basically are typically closed until you need to pull the pump, but when you do need to pull the pump, you have to open up the hatches. And as you can see, the worker just setting and adjusting things right there. It's not the best situation to be in and you can see the lift trucks that are required in to pull the pumps. This is more like the city lift truck, but this was the contractor's version of how to get the pumps in and out of there. When we go to the permanent station, and basically, we have a lot better system set up. You can actually get down to the pumps, actually go touch the pumps, feel them, see how they're doing, listen to them. There's a set of, this is from above, seeing the pumps down below, but there's spiral stairs going down with access platforms. Up above, we actually have a hoist rail that drops down so you can pick the pump up and work on it and we can also pull it out to the side door for work. Back to the interim submersible station, some of the problems with that, it's limited size, restricted access. Basically, you need a service truck anytime you need to work on that pump. You can't get to the pump other than to pull the pump up. You can't typically go down there anyway. You need to bring your portable lighting and air supply because it's not there, so basically you're bringing that in. You have to set it all up so that trucks, when someone needs to come and work on this, they need to bring the service truck that has all that equipment on there so they can safely work on it. Ice and steam are safety hazards. Get a lot of humidity coming up there wintertime with it being all outside, it just freezes up. You get ice all the way around that hatch. As soon as you have to open that hatch to pull the pump, you've got a major safety issue you've got to deal with. Just for some idea, these are about 35 feet deep. You can't even hardly see the pumps here, but this is a picture basically what it looks like when you open that hatch when it's cold out. You can't see anything. So you need to basically hook on the pumps. Most of the time, they have a hook, basically like fishing, and as we say, it's like fishing in the dark. You have no idea where that pump's actually at and it's kind of a guessing game getting on top of it for pulling it out.
How do you put it back in if you can't see when you're pulling it out?
It's got a guide rail system. That's the rails right here, from here to go all the way to the bottom and it's actually slides down those guide rails and drops in there. We go to the permanent wet/dry station on the wet side. We have a larger pit, again, spiral stairs to get down to the bottom. Makes it a lot more readily accessible, again, built-in lighting, ventilation, you turn it on, a lot safer working condition for the maintenance crews. There still are hazards in that area, but again, with the ventilation and automatically turning it on, it helps to reduce those. One of the things that does allow us a lot quicker for emergency repairs when you do need to do them. We do also have inlet gates on here then, which allows, you can't see it on here very well, but there's a gate on the inlet pipe coming in that you can actually close it and stop the flow coming in if you do need to work down in there. There's a bar screen down there too, which then also collects the troublesome rags that then they can remove weekly instead of letting it go through the submersible pump and possibly clogging it. Typical site access, this is kind of a layout where we, if we did a interim one, we put the wet pit here, gravity sewer comes in, we put the valve manhole over here, we run a force main, we tie in and connect up to our force main system. It's set up that then the permanent station, which is shaded here, could be installed in the future and we just go from the existing wet well, we actually just run a new gravity in and we run a new force main out and tie back in the force main. So it's kind of, we're not necessarily wasting anything by doing the interim station, we're using it as part of the future stuff. Here's some ideas on interim station costs. We looked at if we had built an interim station 2020 and then looking at the, replacing it with a permanent wet/dry station, say 15 years later, which is our typical cycle for that. The total cost today is dollars at 4.615 million. If you look at a permanent station option, put the permanent wet/dry station in 2020 and then doing a rehab in 2035, again, total cost 4,510,000. So very close, actually closer than I could ever estimate. And again, if you did do the interim, there's about 630,000 of that initial investment that's being reused when you do, put the permanent one in there. That includes items such as a sanitary sewer, wet wells, part of electrical service, bypass piping, access road and force main. Looked at some of the benefits of permanent stations, a lot safer working conditions, a lot quicker maintenance, diagnostics of repairs and problems. Most of the stuff's in the station. They can actually come from home if they get an emergency call, they can jump in the car, get over to the station and work on it. They have a larger wet well area, which then allows more time before it actually backs up. And as we say, when it backs up, it backs up into someone's basement and people don't like it when we use their basement for storage. Permanent one, if you put in now, it avoids future major construction in the developed areas 15 years from now. The station's there. It also then, people as a buy around that area, they know what's there, they can see it as being a permanent station, they know what it looks like. They can't say, hey, why didn't someone tell me about this? It's permanently there, it's there for everyone to see. And it avoids the need for future capital dollars because you're going to spend the capital dollars upfront, you won't need as many in the future. Missed the interim one. Interim get delays because less money to spend upfront. Architectural appearance for 2035, you could actually put your permanent station to kind of match surroundings a little better. 2035, when you built a permanent station, you would have a brand-new station again rather than a rebuilt station, so it's kind of a trade-off there that you're going to... With that, just the cost of the interim and permanent stations over that 15-year period in today's dollars are very similar. Can't really come up with a whole lot of difference on that. And the permanent station, one of the biggest things I see as a selling point is a lot safer environment work for the workers and allows more reaction time for repairs. It's probably double, if not more, reaction time there.
With that, I'll open it up for questions. Thank you for that presentation. Very surprising. Yes, Mr. Walker?
So I guess I just kind of wanted to point out, as we started this project, we felt that the interim was the way to go. Just, one of the major benefits of it is, is it can delay capital investments, but we talked a little bit with Marine and Finance Department and she felt that it would be acceptable to finance a permanent station. Knowing that the costs over a 15-year period are pretty similar between the interim and the permanent and knowing that there's additional advantages of safety and reliability for the permanent, our recommendation would be to construct the permanent, although we as staff could live with either the permanent or the temporary at this point in time. But anyway, with that, our recommendation would be to proceed with the permanent station at this time.
I have a real quick question, Mr. Walker. The easement for the stations, we have authority, we have the property for regardless of which we go permanent or...
So as you recall, the request for us even putting this station in is that the property owner, or at least one of the property owners in that one square mile of land is intending on proceeding... on proceeding with development. The intent of going forth with this project would be is that we would go forth with the design of this station up to some point until we found out for sure where the station would go. We would not proceed with final design or even bidding the project until after the developer platted the property and we knew he was serious in going forth with this. So we'll take it to a point and stop design until the property owner comes forth with his solid plan.
Excellent. A follow-up. Do we, for these discussions with them, do we also include public works in relation to yard waste collections?
We haven't discussed that with them yet on this station. We've talked about that on other stations, and we can certainly review that with them and see if this makes sense for a possible location.
I mean, I know it's future, but if we don't have an easement, we're, I'm finding that we're behind the eight ball in a few areas of town already, so it would be nice to include that in the conversation so that people understand that in 2037, there's going to be a brush collection site down there, or grass or whatever it may be.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Veen?
Couple of questions. Mr. Walker, is the plat been filed for a location for this?
It has not. We've been discussions with the property owner in letting him know that the desired location for this lift station is towards the center of this one square mile area. He understands that. He's working on a, you know, utility layout master plan for the stormwater, the sanitary and road system, and at some point in time, he'll be coming forth with a plat.
I think we've all said we need more lots, so we probably need to get this ready for that. But at the same token, we haven't had a commitment because we haven't even filed the plat for the property, so we're starting the design before we even know where it's going to go.
Ultimately, we know that a lift station needs to serve this one square mile. It's been our design standard that we would put a station in a one square mile. So even if we were to progress with design of this station, and the developer ultimately decides he isn't going to proceed with it now, that work will not be lost because we know a station needs to go in that center of that one square mile. Whether it goes a little bit east or a little bit west, those are things that we don't know right now, and we'll stop our work before we get to that point and only proceed with that amount of detail when we know for sure what the plat looks like.
Okay, that's good. For wastewater to really work, we have to know where the water is coming from, because you need water to make wastewater. Where is the water coming for this subdivision?
Well, the way we've been putting in water mains is we start from the edge of the city limits where water mains exist, and we continue towards development. Typically, we put 16-inch water mains on section lines, 12-inch lines on quarter lines, and 8-inch just about everywhere else.
And I'm not talking about the size, I'm talking about where, who's supplying the water for the subdivision.
Oh, okay, I understand that question.
Yeah, Council President Sandy. You know, currently, we have a map, we have a rural water provider called East Central that's in and around Grand Forks. So our current agreement that we have, right now, has City of Grand Forks serving this area to Maryfield Road. So essentially, our water service area follows our plus or minus our flood protection project, which on the south end is Maryfield Road. And so we are still intending to serve this area with, we'll call it drinking water, with our own, I know there's been conversations, but right now, the only thing we know is that we intend on serving this area, and that's the agreement that we have.
And I think that's an important issue that I wanted to make sure.
That is an important issue, Mr. Veen. Any other questions or comments? Any discussion you have, Ms. Ma?
I guess I'm not going to belabor anything. I don't know why we're doing this before we have the plat. I've been kind of confused about this process for this particular development. I'm concerned that we're going to put in, you know, infrastructure to support an entire section, and we don't know how much is going to be put in or when, but I appreciate the information. Whether I think this is the appropriate timing or not, I want to make the best decision we can going forward, so I appreciate the work that was done.
Any other comments? I, for one, the cost benefit to me, it makes sense to put in the permanent lift station based upon the dollars and cents, and the safety aspect of it alone is worth a lot of money, so.
Mr. Sandy, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Weigle moves approval of the staff recommendation. Is there a second? Second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Yes, or...
One thing I guess I wanted to point out is when we brought forth the amendment for the design work of the, the design engineering work, that was anticipated interim station. A permanent station is much more difficult and time-consuming. So at some point in time, we'll bring an amendment back to this committee for approval to do the additional work for a permanent station, but that likely will come after the plat comes forth.
Very good. That makes perfect sense. Great, item 211, presentation and final report on project number 8146, South End Bridge Hydraulic Study. Mr. Walker?
Yes, so back in October of 2019, council directed staff to put together a request for qualifications for a hydraulic study for a potential bridge at locations on 32nd Avenue and Elk's Drive and 47th Avenue. We advertised requests for proposals on that project, and we received interest from five different firms that submitted proposals. And we put together a selection committee consisting of Council President Dana Sandy, East Grand Forks, City Council President Mark Olstead, East Grand Forks Public Works Director Jason Stordahl, and myself. And after interviewing those five firms and looking at their proposals, we selected the firm of KLJ for this project. And back in February, council approved an agreement with KLJ to do this study. Since that time, the firm of KLJ, along with their consultant AE2S, has been studying this project, and they're here tonight to share the results of their study. And so with that, I would like to introduce Scott Mittal from KLJ and Brian Gaddy from AE2S to share with you what they've found.
Mr. Gaddy? Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for holding out for us tonight.
Yeah, I'm going to try and do this presentation with a mask on, but we'll see. My beard's getting five o'clock shadow, and it's kind of pulling it down, so. All right, so one thing I just want to point out real quick, we will be giving this same presentation to East Grand Forks tomorrow night at their working session, council working session. I also have Amber Leefers on the phone from AE2S, just in case there's any really in-depth technical questions. Amber is part of the team with AE2S. She did a lot of the hydraulic study. And then Wade Frank wasn't able to be with us tonight, but he's the lead project manager from KLJ. So first, I just want to talk about the study objectives. So I'm going to talk about what it did and what it didn't look at. So first, we developed some conceptual bridge alignments that were really based off of the MPO study. We didn't come up with anything too wildly different than what was previously shown in the 2045 street highway plan. Next, we were going to identify the bridge, or the impacts from the future bridge on both hydraulic infrastructure and, you know, surrounding infrastructure like pipelines, roads, lift stations, things of that nature. Next, we'd look at mitigating the rise in water surface elevation. And really, that could be a number of different things when we talk about mitigation. Primarily, we're going to talk about floodplain excavation, but there could be property buyouts, could be raising structures, building ring levees, things of those natures could be also considered mitigation. And then lastly, we performed a cost comparison, comparing the alternatives to one another.
Thanks, Brian. So getting into it, as Brian stated, we looked at three locations, Elk's Drive, 32nd Avenue, and 47th. All of these locations and generally the alignments are taken basically straight out of the MPO study that was done in 2018. That is the alignments and the typical section. Typical section consists of two 12-foot lanes, shoulders, and a shared use path on one side of the road. The only tweak we really made was during our analysis at 32nd Avenue, the MPO study showed the alignment for the roadway crossing up and over the flood protection in East Grand Forks to tie into Reinhardt Drive. Based on conversation we had during the study, East Grand Forks preferred to keep that alignment south of the flood protection to preserve some of their buildable area, developable area that is protected by flooding. So before we get too deep in the weeds, we kind of wanted to go over just some general lingo that we'll be talking about as we go through here. So a lot of this was based on spans and what we're calling superstructure depth. So superstructure depth is based on our beam depth and combined with our bridge depth. And so that's all derived based on our span length. So the span is the distance between the two piers. So here, we have a pier, and we have a pier here. The longer that span length, the deeper the beam gets. So you can see down here. So for example, if we want 100-foot span, we can have a 45-inch beam, and that's a total superstructure depth, so from top of deck to low beam, which is out here, of 5.25 feet. And so that's just kind of some general knowledge for you guys to look at as we get through this. We don't want to get too technical. So along with spans and beam depth, things like that, what we initially did is we looked at all the different bridge legs that have been proposed, and then we looked at a bunch of different span configurations, whether that's 100-foot span lengths all the way up to about 160-foot span lengths. So the longer the span, you know, the deeper the beam, there's more weight on each pier, so the thicker the pier. And so really, I don't want to belabor on this slide, but what we did is we tried to throw as much out there so when they're doing the hydraulic model, they have as much flexibility as possible when looking at water elevations, rises, things like that.
So I'm going to talk about just some key hydraulic terms that I'll kind of be using as I talk about some of these results, just since some people maybe have been around this more, understand it better than others. So again, we've referenced rise a few times here, but it's really, rise is how high does the water level get comparing existing conditions, you know, as the river is today versus when we put in the future bridge? So that's just rise. River gauge, this is just a common point we're going to be referencing when we talk about elevations. The river is, or the land is sloped, you know, from south to north. And so when we talk about these river gauges, the river gauge is at the Sorley Bridge downtown. So everything we're going to reference is kind of common around that point. You know, everyone knows kind of the 97 flood gauge got to 54 feet. You know, if you were to reference that to an elevation, I'm just going to throw, you know, 800, and I start talking about what that is on the south end of town, it could be, you know, several feet difference, and there would just be confusion. So we're going to be talking about river gauge heights and elevations, you know, relative to the river gauge. The next one is the 100-year event. I know this one gets talked about a lot. This is an important event when you're talking about how FEMA kind of evaluates risk. So the 100-year event is basically the 1% chance or probability in any given year is the way to explain that flood. It doesn't necessarily mean statistically, you know, it's going to happen once every 100 years, but there is a 1% chance in any given year that flood could happen. And so that's really a lot of what our analysis is based on, is the 100-year event, because it has to do with how FEMA looks at the level of risk and how we may impact insurable structures, which I'll get to. The next one would be the design event. So the design event is actually what the core of engineers use to design the flood protection system, and that's just roughly a 210-year event. Next would be freeboard. So the freeboard is the distance between the designed flood elevation, which the core of engineers use, and the top of levees or the top of your flood wall. In Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, right now, that's about three feet to levees and four feet to top flood walls. When you look at freeboard from 100-year event, it's actually more like seven or eight feet. Again, we're going to be talking mostly about the 100-year event, but I just wanted to clarify that the flood protection systems are designed to something even greater in town. Next, hydraulic mitigation. I explained this a little bit earlier, but we're talking about a common technique of usually excavating the floodplain to lower that rise in water surface elevation that is a result of the new bridge. And with this study, we were looking at trying to eliminate the 100-year event rise. We did not look at trying to mitigate the design event arise. There will be some rise left over after mitigating the 100-year event. I just want everyone to understand that we're looking at purely the 100-year event in this one. And then lastly is insurable structures. So that could be a home, a building, anything that lies within the 100-year floodplain that has, typically has flood insurance through the NFIP. These are, this will become important later on, but again, this is what FEMA is very concerned about, making sure that they limit their risk, because the National Flood Insurance Program is just that, it's a national program, not through private insurers. It's paid for by the government.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
While we're going... That last one about worrying about the 100-year event versus the design event, what's the impact? Is the impact to the design event typically less because it's, or would it be more?
So they're pretty similar, I guess I would say, in the amount of rise.
About the...
I'll just, we'll get to a slide on this, but you know, the most, the biggest impact we're talking about is maybe 2/10ths. So when we have...
The 100 or the design?
Probably the design event, or both.
Or for both?
Yep. So when we're talking about, we already have three or four feet of freeboard, the thinking behind that was that FEMA views things that you cannot impact any insurable structure. You cannot have a rise on it, and so you would have to mitigate that. The core of engineers in past experience have been maybe a little bit more relaxed, where they'll allow some rise. And so if we're talking about eating into, I'm just throwing out numbers, eating in a 10th of the freeboard of already the three or four feet you have, I'd say it's likely that you're not going to go add a 10th of a foot of dirt to all your levees in town. It seems pretty improbable at this point in time. Those conversations have to be had further when we go through all of our results with the core and FEMA.
And let me clarify what my concern was, which is a little bit beyond this, because I went back and looked at the legislation. Equally, I was hoping this would be the kickoff to what the impacts of farwater diversion might be on us. If there's something down there that impacts, and the reason why I'm looking at a 10th of a foot, we always wanted to be able to contain a 500-year level flood in here, and a 10th of flood could make a difference on that level of containment, even though it's pretty minor for the hundreds. So I think there's a little bit of, you know, back and forth here, and I understand what you're talking about, but the design event and the potential to contain a larger event is really important.
Correct. Yep, and I'm glad you brought that up, and that definitely should be, it will definitely be looked at further as this progresses further. But at this point in time, yeah, we limited the scope to looking at the 100-year and seeing what maybe the ultimate rise would be after we mitigate for the 100-year.
And I concur with that. I think that's a great idea. I do think we have another issue that's outside of this, on what that impact would be and how we might want to study that impact.
Agreed. So this slide, what it's just intended to show is the different bridge heights that we analyzed, and try to give you a frame of reference to other existing infrastructure in town. So as we look at like a low bridge option, it is pretty low, because flood stage starts at 28 feet. And so you're looking at some of these, you know, these closures are down there, 35, 38, 39. It's going to be a pretty frequent closure. So, most of those heights are somewhere in between the 10-year and river flood stage. Next would be our medium bridge heights. These vary a little bit, but for frame of reference, they're in between somewhere, you know, the Minnesota Avenue or Sorley Bridge closures, up to the Kennedy Bridge closure. Right in, right in the middle there are pretty much equal to it. And then last would just be the high bridge, where that's up and over the flood protection system, so the low beam of the bridge would be like equivalent to the top of your flood protection system. So it's up there ways, it would be high and dry.
With that, kind of want to get into more specifics at each location. So working north to south, starting at Elks Drive, I guess, before we get too deep, how we set each one of these profiles, and this is, this is general for all three locations, is the low bridge is just, what's the shortest bridge we can get and get across the river, and then follow existing ground as much as possible, reduce any fill quantities, reduce bridge height, things of that nature. The medium bridge elevation generally follows the existing ground elevation on the Grand Fork side of the river, and then carries that elevation all the way across till we tie into these Grand Forks. And as Brian was saying, the high bridge goes up and over all the existing flood protection, so that the low beam of that superstructure would be about the elevation of the top of the levees right now. So with that, so this is at Elks Drive. So here you can see, this is the existing removable closure that you guys have out there now. So the high bridge, which is this blue line, that's up and over the existing flood protection. It is important to note that, to try and condense this slideshow to a little less slides, we're showing the centerline alignment. On each different alternative, whether it's the low, medium, or high, there are some different nuances, what driveways we tie into, some different, you know, for example, trying to get to the golf course here, on the high alternative, we have to tie in differently than we would on the low alternative, things like that. So then going to the medium bridge, that's this green line here, and that's at a 54. But that would likely close at about elevation 59, that has to do with more where the sill of that removable closure is, rather than what the bridge elevation is. And then, the low bridge down here is between a 39 and 50. And again, that would close around a 35, not because the bridge is underwater, or you guys have to put in that removable closure, but more just because of the roadway inundation on the East Grand Fork side, just it being lower. Moving south to 32nd, I guess I should go back with this, and on each alternative, you know, with this one, we have identified that there is a sanitary sewer that is potentially impacted with the high alternative. And then, property impacts obviously get greater with each alternative as we get higher in elevation. So low being the lowest, high being the highest property impacts. Moving to 32nd, again, you can see the, the existing levy here, high we're above that, the medium, we're about touching existing ground, and the low, we just shoot straight across rivers as close as we can. With, with 32nd Avenue and 47th, it is important to note that this would add another removable closure to you guys' flood protection system, being there is just levees right now and no roadway infrastructure through it, like at Elks Drive. We would need to add those for both the low and the medium. And then again, this low bridge is between 39 and 52 river gauge, but again, down here, the road will close around 38, just due to roadway inundation during a flooding. And then moving to 47th. With this, again, high bridge way up here, the low generally following the existing ground, or the medium, I'm sorry, generally following the existing ground, and the low shooting straight across. And again, this bridge closes, we'd need to add a removable closure at the existing levy. And then it's roadway inundation that closes the road on the low, and it would be the installation of the temporary closure that would close the bridge on the medium elevation.
One thing I do want to touch on at 47th Avenue, the high option. So, on the North Dakota side or Grand Fork side, we have a flood protection system, we're going up and over. On the East Grand Fork side, there is no flood protection system, and you have no high ground to tie into. So if you were truly to take advantage of that high option, you'd have to build an extremely high embankment for a lot of miles to really get the benefit of the level of service of a high bridge. I just want to point that out, because we're not showing the full profile, but once it gets to the other side, it, it does have to come back down eventually. Alright, so you guys want data. So here's some, a lot of numbers to look at. I've organized this table, this is showing the 100-year rise for each bridge alternative that we analyzed. And so, if you recall what Scott was talking about, we have a low 1, a low 4, there's different numbers here, but only thing to remember is that a, a 1 corresponds to like a smaller beam depth, so more spans, smaller beam depth, smaller pier, compared to a 4, which would have a larger beam or larger superstructure, larger spans, and larger piers. So, this table is just listing 10ths and 100ths. And for frame of reference, 800ths is equal to about 1 inch of water surface rise. We're talking about very, very small values here. But again, when we look at FEMA's criteria, we need to mitigate anything over 0 feet. And so, I've highlighted in green and red here, just best case versus worst case as it comes to rise. So when you're looking at the low bridge, you know, your Elks Drive low 1 seems to be the, the minimum amount of rise that you'd get, and then 32nd Avenue is all the way up at 2/10ths. Another point, or another frame of reference, the Red River is extremely flat, and so 1/10th of rise actually propagates, or before you see that wash out or disappear, actually propagates upstream all the way to Hartsfield Cooley, or like the Thompson Bridge. So, you can see where, if there's a lot of like farmsteads, homes, things outside of flood protection, as you head all the way to Thompson Bridge, you could have an impact on, on just 50 structures. It can add up very quickly on the amount you have to mitigate, if you don't find other ways to move that water past the bridge faster. The medium bridge, again, it looks like, you know, 32nd Avenue has the worst impacts there compared to Elks. And then actually, when we flip to the high bridges, 32nd kind of flips on us and actually becomes the best option there, as far as rise, and 47th appears to be the worst. Next, I'll get into just mitigation. There's a lot going on, or happening on this screen. So really, what this is intended to, is give you a visual of the mitigation that we looked at. So again, mitigation, we looked at to eliminate, or reduce or eliminate that rise, is kind of shown in the green areas here. So you have the low option for 32nd on the left, comparing to a medium option bridge, and you can see how much more area the low needs for mitigation compared to the medium. Also on here, you're seeing two different bridge alignments, and this is what Scott alluded to earlier, that East Grand Forks wanted us to look at a preferred alignment, or an alignment that was outside of their flood protection system, just to help save space. The other interesting thing that kind of happened when we did this, is there kind of seemed to be a flip of where, you look at the northern alignment, it's inside the flood protection system, and the southern one is outside of it. We're actually seeing, when we run the southern alignment, we're seeing rise that is not possible for us to mitigate without impacting those insurable structures, which would be kind of farmsteads, buildings and stuff on the east side. The, the profiles, just again, are depicting, the blue is the, the river or the existing ground, you can kind of see the levees on each side, and then the orange would be the areas that we would excavate or kind of bench in to increase that channel area. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I want to go back to the East Grand Forks alignment. The dashed one, or the solid one, does that match into their, either of them match into their flood protection system?
So what we would likely do with that one is, it ties into Reinhardt Drive there. You would likely, if you were doing a medium or high option, you would build up Reinhardt Drive to like the levy height, so you could take care of that level of service. It's relatively short distance from the edge of their flood protection system, which is right here.
Okay, it's right there.
Yep, so this is their levy, existing levy system right there. So it's a relatively short distance that you would have to build up some roadway embankment to.
Either of them are workable, it's just what they're now preferring over what they previously-
It was just, again, it was a, I don't want to say that's a hard preferred on their side, it was just, it was asked to be looked at because they, again, they wanted to try and save developable space, they didn't want a new roadway and bridge inside of their levy system, is, is one of the reasons that they brought up for it being preferred.
The only comment I would make is, I would like to see us have a bridge that doesn't have a curve in it.
Okay.
Because that's just asking for problems with ice, and we realize that with our point bridge we have now, so just, just a comment of, bridges, curves on bridges, I don't think are very smart.
And much of this isn't necessarily bridge. Some, some of it on the Grand Fork side, that curve point could be, but most of it on the East Grand Fork side, you know, where you're seeing those curves, would be roadway embankment. The, the last thing I wanted to point out was the, the actual volumes of mitigation. So this table on the bottom left outlines the, the volume needed to mitigate the rise at each of those different locations and bridge heights. Again, 47th Avenue for a low option seems to be giving you the best numbers. And it's Elks Drive at the medium, and 32nd for high bridge. These values, they're, sorry, I don't know if you can see this clearly, but values range anywhere from 60,000 yards of like floodplain excavation, all the way up to 1.4 million yards. To put that in, you know, truckload terms, a 20-yard truck, you'd be looking at like 3,000, 3,000 truckloads to move 60,000 yards. Compared to 1.4 million, you'd be looking at 70,000 truckloads of dirt. It gets to be a rather expensive process, so that's why we kind of wanted to quantify these different values for different locations, heights, things of that nature. I do want to point out, again, it seems as we move, as we moved further south, outside of East Grand Forks flood protection limits, we had more issues trying to mitigate that rise, because there's insurable structures inside the floodplain on the east side. So, there would be additional mitigation needed, whether it be property buyouts, raising structures, ring levees of that nature, that aren't depicted on here, but would be necessary if you picked one of the, either 32nd Avenue south alignment, or the 47th Avenue alignment. And that's true for any elevation. The northern 32nd Avenue alignment, we are able to mitigate the rise before it reaches insurable structures.
Hey, Mr. Gaddy, I don't recall two different bridge locations ever being discussed in the scope of work for this project.
Again, this was something that we did a quick cursory review, and it was, project was going well, moving well, and so it was looked at-
Sure.
Quickly.
Okay. I'm surprised I didn't hear East Grand Forks ask for additional study. Seems that that would be something that we would have discussed communally, simply because we were jointly paying for this study, so anyhow, that's neither here nor there. Thank you.
It was not an increase to the budget, that was budgeted by both cities. So, I kind of talked through a lot of things here, I just want to draw on some key hydraulic conclusions. You know, the, the, the bridge heights, again, the low bridges are closing relatively early, or small flood stages where just, it's going to be flooded more frequently. There's other things that go along with that, you know, increased maintenance, just shutdown times, cleaning of debris, there could be preparations needed, maybe you have streetlights that have to be taken down, things like that, because it's going to be flooded more often. The medium bridge, it's, it's closer to, I'd say, the bridges we have in town already, as far as the heights, it's probably more what we're used to, and then again, the high bridge is high and dry, up above it, it's, it's going to be dry pretty much no matter what flood event. If that thing gets wet, both the cities are going to be wet. Hydraulic impacts, as far as height and elevation, so rise is smallest for high bridges, and greatest for low bridges. Basically, all you're seeing there is, the more the bridge sits in the waterway, the more impact it has, is another way to put it. Bridge configuration, again, the, the small, our rise is smallest for bridges with shallow superstructure. So if we have a bridge that has a smaller beam, it's going to cause less rise compared to a bridge with a large or wide, tall beam. Again, the more the bridge sits in the waterway, the more the rise it's going to have. Impacts when they're compared to our mitigation. So, these are just kind of general statements, but Elks Drive, again, it's up in between the flood protection limits, there are no insurable structures nearby, it seems to be the most straightforward as far as mitigation is concerned, where it's only floodplain mitigation, we're not having to deal with trying to mitigate insurable structures. 47th Avenue and 32nd Avenue southern alignment create the most challenges when they come to mitigation, and that's purely due to the impacts on insurable structures that are unavoidable at this point. And then the northern 32nd Avenue alignment is similar to Elks Drive, it's in the limits of both Grand Forks, East Grand Forks flood protection, and it can be mitigated by floodplain excavation alone. Again, other options for mitigation on insurable structures would be possibly building a ring levy, but preliminary discussions with FEMA, any ring levy that we would build around these farmsteads would have to be a certified levy. Even if the property has an existing ring levy right now, you'd have to go through the certification process, which I'm just going to say is going to take maybe a year or two just to even get through that process. And it would have to be, you know, engineered, evaluated, and then you get into the whole other side of it, of who owns and operates that ring levy. You know, FEMA would typically like to see it operated by a municipality, because then they know it's going to be maintained, properly taken care of, but those are all things that I have to get into. You also, it would require buy-in from the owner on what mitigation they're even going to accept. It could come down to, you know, just doing a property buyout may be your most straightforward and simplest in terms of, of performing that mitigation for those properties. I didn't talk about this, but as far as 32nd Avenue, it has probably eight properties that are- that are likely insured right now under NFIP. If you were to buy out those properties, it would cost roughly $2 to $3 million is what it looked like. That was just pulling assessed values off the county website and adding a multiplier to it. And then 47th Avenue has a little less at six structures. That'd be about $2 million to, to buy those out, just doing a quick desktop review. And then last, property impacts, which, these are pretty intuitive, but Low Bridge has the least amount of property impacts, High Bridge has the most. Again, and that has to do with just tieback or tying in roads, the taller embankment that you have to tie into potentially hitting nearby properties, things like that. I'd say medium bridge impacts are very similar to Low Bridge because we're tying into existing ground. We're not really raising or doing an embankment there. So Low compared to Medium are very similar impacts. And then as far as location, Elks Drive seems to have the least amount of impacts, 32nd Avenue seems to have the most. And that's just purely number of properties that are kind of on the Grand Forks side. You have a lot of homes along 32nd and 47th where Elks Drive, maybe you're looking at fewer, you know, the park and golf course to the north and a homeowner on the south. Turnover Scott to talk about costs.
Thanks, Brian. So we, we put cost estimate together for all of these, the low, medium, high, and to try and paint the real picture, we separated them out into these different buckets. So, bridge costs, road costs, land acquisition costs, and then the mitigation. I will say it's important to note that, for example, Brian mentioned at 47th, you'd have to raise Reinhardt Drive for quite a ways to make that high and bridge worth it. That cost isn't included in this, nor is the cost for those insurable structures that we just discussed as well. When we talk about, for example, right-of-way costs, that's mainly land to acquire for the new road on the East Grand Forks side and any property impacts on the Grand Forks side. It is important to go through and look, you know, for example, it's counterintuitive, but you see at, at Elks Drive here, the Low Bridge has the highest roadway costs, and that's just because the, but it also has the highest, the lowest bridge cost. It's, it's because there's, there's that much more road compared to the bridge. The other thing to look at is, again, Brian said the lower the bridge, the higher the mitigation. So that mitigation for all of them on the Low side is extremely high, and as you get higher with your bridge, that mitigation drops. What we have gone through and done is, for all these colors that we've looked at, it corresponds, so at 47th, the cheapest Low alternative is, is at 47th. The cheapest Medium alternative is at Elks Drive, and same with the cheapest High alternative. Just with that, you know, going through, I'm not going to go through all of these, but, you know, we did include the different costs for the bridges. So the, the higher the bridge, you know, just constructability, you're that much further in the air, the piers are beefier, it just costs that much more to build those bridges. That's why for the Low, Medium, and High, there is different cost per square foot for that bridge. So with that kind of next steps, you know, Brian's already covered a lot of this, but it, it's really just talking with FEMA in the, in the core. You know, who's going to govern what, you know, what's FEMA going to allow, what, what's the next steps with them? And same with the core with that design event rise. What are the next steps? What are they going to allow? What further analysis needs to be completed? From there, it's identifying those landowners that are, you know, had insurable structures that we can't mitigate for with excavation in the floodplain. Go talk to them, you know, see if they are adamant they want to stay there, or maybe they're planning on selling anyway, that, we don't know. But it's kind of talking to them to get a buy-off because that could gauge, you know, what, what level of effort's going to have to go into that alternative. If they're dead set on staying there and they're going to demand a ring levee, those operation and maintenance costs are hidden, and we, we don't know what those are in the future. Who's going to operate that? What happens if, if whoever's supposed to own and operate and it doesn't meet that agreement down the road? And then there's some other things that we need to talk about too, that, that we didn't do in this study, is, is look at the slope stability along the riverbank. You know, can we put 20 feet of embankment up there with a bridge without doing some sort of geotechnical mitigation? Can we excavate a giant hole next to the river for some of this mitigation without any slides, things like that? And make sure, again, we identify those so you can add those costs to this, if there is any. And then, again, this is just a kind of a piece of the pie that overall will come together. You know, one thing I do want to discuss too is these costs, none of these costs take into account operation and maintenance, and then also user delays or, or infrastructure adjacent to this. You know, for example, if you need to redo an intersection or add a streetlight or something somewhere to better facilitate traffic to get to the new crossing location, these costs do not account for any of that. With that, can open it up to any questions you guys might have.
And just back to that, that MPO kind of next step. So we presented probably a lot of facts. I'd say the next step is to bring all of this data, including the MPO, you know, traffic study, things of that nature, to try and boil it down into some kind of ranking criteria that maybe both cities could buy into. There, you know, there isn't a hard recommendation in this study, right? There's kind of, there's drawbacks and there's, you know, there's good things and there's bad things about each location, and it can be, there could be a lot of nuance to how we look at this, and there's an infinite number of options when it comes to bridge heights, bridge locations exactly, alignments. This is really just to help try and maybe bracket that discussion to help guide you moving forward. So really, I think the, the next steps is to try and bring this all together with the MPO study.
Thank you, gentlemen. Great information. Comments or questions? Mr. Veen, do you? Use your mic, Mr. Veen? Use your microphone.
How your numbers cost compared to the MPO cost? I don't, because you, you look like you put a lot more effort into it than the MPO did of looking at, looking at spans and distances. They look at some really high level pricing, and I would have to commend you guys that yours is far better pricing. And I don't know whether it's higher or lower or whatever it is, but it's got to be a little bit more accurate.
Mr. Grasser, something to add?
Yeah, good evening. I think in answer to that question, I think the, the MPO did a, did a very generic analysis based on the bridge and dollars per foot. Again, the intent of the MPO was just to do a comparison of one to the other using the same criteria. I, I would generally call that the first peel of the onion. This is about the second and third peel of the onion relative to degree of accuracy. And so they were able to dial in a lot more detail compared to the MPO study. Again, it's just a, a matter of a higher level reconnaissance study versus one that has another level of detail.
And I knew that, but I was still interested to know how close we, we were in the end because a lot of their benefit cost ratios were based on costs, that you have much better information now to find out which is.
I think what you'll find is the, the cost differential from the Low Bridge to the High Bridge is much, much closer under this study than they were with the MPO. And a lot of that has to do with the, mitigating the hydraulic impacts, things like that. So if I remember, I think the MPO had some of the high, higher end was like $75 million, something like that. And now you see in, in this, in this area here, we're looking, you know, 40 to mid-40, something like that, and, and the low area is about 30. So again, the spread between the Low and the High is much less under this study.
And additional comments?
Mr. Dandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weber, you're with us. Good.
So the, the hydraulics study does not make any hard recommendations, but one of the purposes of this study was to see if we could eliminate any. You're telling us that all three of these are essentially viable depending on what you're willing to spend.
Yeah, and I guess I'll add a little caveat to that, and this is maybe my opinion, but particularly when you look at some of the Low and Medium options, I would generally say that you could probably eliminate looking at Low options for Elks and 32nd Avenue, just looking at the costs. So for Elks, I'd call them relatively equal, and we actually see an increase in cost when we look at 32nd Avenue. So my personal opinion is you would throw the Low option out for those two, and you look at something higher, a Medium to a High Bridge, you know, or something in between that, if you're looking for something level of service more than maybe what Kennedy Bridge supplies you right now. So I would, I would eliminate those. Another opinion, but 47th Avenue High, again, with nothing to tie into on the East Grand Forks side as far as high ground, I really don't see the benefit in that right now. Things could change, you know, this bridge will be in place a very, very long time. You know, the town will continue to grow south, so maybe things could change, but it just, at this point in time, I, I really don't see the, the merit in that option.
That, that's helpful. Can I ask that you amend your report for us to include those in your conclusions?
Yes.
Some questions?
Yep. Yeah, I should say, we're, we're wrapping up the actual report document right now that has a lot more data behind some of this. We tried to boil this down as much as possible, but yes, there's a lot of data in there, and we'll make sure that those, those conclusions, I guess, are, key points get put in there. We should have the report finished some point this week.
As I remember, our, one of our hopes of this study was less about pointing us in direction of what would be the best to do, and we were looking more to what could be eliminated. So that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Gaddy, if collectively you come up with additional recommendations or thoughts, please feel free to add them into the report, because we all could use a little help right now finding a direction to go. Mr. Walker, something to add?
So if I may, you know, the, the intent of this report was to determine if we could eliminate any, any of the sites, and, and it seems as if all three sites are a possibility. Our recommendation is to receive and, and file this final report, and, and then the MPO can then utilize the information that's in this report to, to continue on with their study. And so hopefully, we'll be able to, to come to more of an, of an agreement as to where the bridge location should be and whether it should be a high, low, or medium, once that study is complete, so.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Are there any other questions or is there a motion to receive and file?
I make a motion to receive and file.
Mr. Veen moves. Second by Kabami. Any other comments? Mr. Weber, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for your great short presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Andy Peres, 212, 2021 Budget Discussion. There's multiple attachments, information regarding Indy Peres Public Safety Pension Plan, a letter, a presentation given at the City Council, the preliminary budget binder, as well as the budget questions and answers that Ms. Dorsted put together for me today. I'll open it up for discussion if there's any comments or thoughts. I know I had a variety of questions that Ms. Dorsted answered in, in an email back to me, and they are attached to the agenda tonight, so if anyone, any of you, she copied us all in the email. I frankly didn't have a chance this afternoon to, to read through the responses, but I will certainly do that. And they're available for the general public to review as well out on the websites for, for anyone that's interested in what I thought were the relatively pertinent things that I came across in, in the budget. But personally, I, you know, other than my very specific questions related to the, the Dyke mills, the mills related to the Dyke, which of course were rolling off, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Dorsted, that, it used to be five mills when it started, was, was that correct? And we've been slowly rolling them back?
President Sandy, members of council, it actually originally began at 15 mills when, with the start of the payment on that debt.
'97.
And when we spoke of this in 20, I believe it was 2016, with the plan of these bonds maturing, and we had some mill cuts in general fund, and part of the plan was to bring these in. At that time, there were 5.34 mills left in that fund.
Got it. So council members, the, I know that if people are looking for general observations, I think the, the mayor and the team have put together a really good budget. I think there have been a lot of careful considerations. In times of crisis, of course, revenues are down, there's been some concerns about sales tax. I think we're pretty fortunate that staff continues to evaluate the situation, and every month that's going by, they're looking at the revenues on the sales tax side, and we've been fortunate that, surprisingly, I'm surprised by it, that sales tax collections have remained strong in months where we thought, or I personally thought that they weren't going to. I think the Finance Department took a very conservative approach and started with a expectation that numbers were going to be considerably down, but then as we've gone on, they've, they've loosened that some, simply because we're seeing better than what we had anticipated, sales tax collections. And with that, with more revenue makes the budget easier, right? You, you start out thinking that you're going to be slashing and burning so many different things from the budget, but, you know, we've eliminated, I believe, I don't know, Ms. Bovette, what the total number, was it a total of exactly two, two positions removed from full-time equivalents, or, I guess I could look at the very back of the book, but.
Hey, I think it was just 1.75.
Right. So we, it wasn't two full positions. With that, the mayor's managed to put together a budget that is providing a modest, a modest property tax cut for people. I, of course, I'm, I'm a little surprised that we weren't seeing cuts in arts and, and special events. I'm happy to see that, again, with revenues, you have the ability to include, continue to include some of the additional things that I, I believe are niceties for our, for our community. Anyone else? Mr. Weigle, would you like to talk about the, the Indy Peres Pension Plan?
Absolutely. Just want to echo what you said, President Sandy. Appreciate Mayor Bocinski and, and working with me and Ms. Bovette, working diligently to get this information in a quick, quick manner so that we can, we can look at some things tonight, and Maureen and Todd and, and all their work that they do. What I, what I find is really interesting, if you don't work in a law enforcement or firefighting field, you may not know that fire and police don't often agree on a whole lot. And I, I got a letter from, from both the FOP and the Fire Union tonight agreeing that, that they're both in support of switching to this Public Safety Retirement Plan. So I guess I would just invite Ms. Bovette up to maybe discuss some of the general nuances of it and maybe open it up for questions for any of the council members. And Mr. Shimke or Mr. Dewey, if they'd like to speak on it as well.
Okay. Council, President Sandy, members of the council, the information packet that I provided to you just goes through some different comparisons for you to consider. Some of the, the considerations that we've been weighing over the last couple of years is just the, the, Indy Peres main plan has lost some major benefits or decreased benefits over the last four years. Specifically in 2016, they moved from a rule of 85 calculation to a rule of 90 calculation with a minimum age of 60. Prior to that, so anyone hired prior to 2016, once they hit the rule of 85, were eligible for retirement, regardless of their age. So that was, that's, that impact of, of moving to the rule of 90 really impacted our police and fire department. So in 2017, when Indy Peres allowed firefighters onto the public safety plan, that's when the. this discussion started coming up. Anything specific you'd like me to point out?
Mr. Weigle?
I think the biggest thing is when I look at this, is I really think it's a way to support our firefighters and our law enforcement officers. I think we all know that they both serve in physically demanding jobs, but also mentally draining and very difficult positions, and seeing a lot of things that normal people don't have to see on a daily basis. And I think this gives us an opportunity to ensure that the retirement is there, that they have the ability to retire at a younger age, even though they may not have to. But I think it goes a long ways in showing that we truly do support what they do for our community. And I think it's great that they all looked at this as an option this year and said, hey, we'd be willing to give back our $1,000 raise, give some in order to get something. And I think this is a great time to be able to work this into the budget. And I guess I just invite Mr. Shimke or Mr. Dewey, or if they'd like to say anything. I know they submitted letters prior to this meeting.
Before we do that, and I'd love to hear from either of them if they're interested, can, Ms. Dorsted, can you explain to us the financial implications of changing the plan? If I recall correctly, we went through this last week, but I'd like to hear it again.
Okay. President Sandy, members of council, I believe the annual difference in costs is an additional cost to the city after the trade with the raise of about $110, $110,000 to $120,000. And that would be an annual cost. So part of what I address when you get a chance, Mr. Sandy, to see the email response is, so when we put together the mayor's budget and the six-year projection, just for your financial consideration in this decision, is the financial impact for the Public Safety Pension Plan wasn't figured into the six-year general fund projection as far as how those numbers. So what will happen was it would, holding all else the same, and we've said over and over again, we'll continue to monitor those revenue streams, but all else held the same. You know, a couple of things would happen with that projection. Either we would dip below that 18% on a signed fund balance, or you'd have to adjust revenues or expenses to offset that cost. So that's just the input I give you financially as you consider this decision.
Yes, Ms. Mock?
But it also changes the rates that the employees are putting towards their benefits versus the city. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Mock, that is correct. The contribution rate for the Indy Per's Public Safety Plan is 5.5% for the employee, and for the main plan, that's 7%. So it's a 1.5% reduction for all those who would choose to participate. The employer contribution for, which is what results in the increased costs, is 10.95% for anyone joining the Public Safety Plan versus the 8.26% for the main plan.
Mr. Cavami, question or comment?
The question I had was, is this one line item enough to take us below the 18% that you had discussed?
Councilman Cavami, members of the council, so I believe over the six-year period of time, the impact would be about $650,000. I believe over that time period, you know, we come right to that 18%. So yes, it would drop below the 18%. With that said, we work through this every year with the budget, but we did put forward a projection very tight on expenses. So I just put the caution out there financially that, yeah, we'd have to continue to monitor expenses. We did project very tight with future wage increases, and we're holding on capital. So we just need to, you know, watch those expenses very closely as we go forward.
That's something that could easily be course-corrected next year as we update our projections.
I wouldn't use the word easily, but I think there's a lot of unknowns right now, which is originally why the budget didn't come forward with a recommendation of a change to commit to more expense. We weren't funding the complete salary plan, we weren't funding all capital. So that's the financial concern I would have, get the basis behind Mr. Weigle and all our public safety. But just so you know, that the financial side, there is an additional cost. We're at a time where there's still a lot of unknowns. Excuse me. So we continue to monitor that, but going into it, we just don't know exactly how sales tax will behave going forward. So, and this would put in additional costs, so we'd have to continue to monitor that.
Thank you. That being said, I think that in my profession, I don't get a call at 3:00 in the morning and have to run into a burning building or put in harm's way. I'm pretty fortunate. So I think if there's a way to make this happen, I would be supportive of it.
Mr. Sandy? Yes, Mr. Weber?
First of all, I'd like to thank Representative Weigle for his work on this. This is something that the Pension Committee has been looking at for a few years, trying to make happen. So thank you for doing that, and I'll support this and make a motion to move forward with this, and then I have another comment.
I don't think we necessarily need a motion tonight, Mr. Weber, although I think general consensus, I personally, for me, this is a public safety issue, and it's, public safety is the number-one reason we're all sitting here. And so I am very supportive of this, and I know it has significant impacts on the future budget. I understand that. I also know that, I think in light of the current situation around the country and recent events in Grand Forks, I think we all need to recognize that we need a strong team of first responders, and they also need to know that we care about them and the work that they do for our city. And I, for one, would prefer someone younger coming to save me if I need to be saved, just to make sure that they can pick me up and carry me out the door. So that's, for me, it's all about public safety, so.
Very good. If I could make another comment?
Yes, Mr. Weber?
So I'm supportive of this as it stands, but I'd like to point out, the additional cost of this is very close to the cost of the property tax reduction. A property tax reduction that does nothing for renters in our community, which is close to about half of our citizens, half of our, you know, people living in homes. And it disproportionately benefits people who probably don't need that extra free cup of coffee each month. This is a property tax that is largely symbolic, is not benefiting most of our citizens, and if we were to forego that property tax cut, we could pay for this benefit for our fire and police.
Thank you for that input. Yes, Ms. Dorsted?
I would just add that no motion would be needed tonight. This is a discussion night about the budget. Next week, on the third, it comes for preliminary approval, and that if you wish to adjust the mayor's budget, that's when council would have the opportunity to make any changes.
Are there any other comments or thoughts about the budget? Anything anyone wants? Yes, Ms. Mock?
Is there? So I was working on questions, and I apologize, I haven't gotten them out yet. Is there a way that you estimate for electricity and water sewer and refuse? I was noticing with some facilities, it seemed very consistent over the past, you know, from 18, 19, 20. Others, it seemed like there was an increase, and I wasn't sure if we were doing that on purpose. And I'm working on a list so I can help better with that.
Ms. Mock, members of council, I'll try to address that the best I can. We, as far as the projection, I believe on utilities, we are estimating 3% to 5% for the water, and the electricity heat, 5% to 10%. As far as each budget year, when we're looking at that, we're looking at not just what's expected for, as we do for rate increase, for instance, with calls for electric and gas, but also keeping in mind weather and from one year to the next, how that may have impacted different heating bills and things. As far as gas, we look at those trends and projections and what they're projecting those gas prices to be out the next year, and trying to go across the board on the best we can do there.
And then the other one that was, I was noticing with the fire and tornado insurance, it seemed like for some buildings, we had that line item in, in like 19, and now it was zeroed out, but then I noticed a large, like $33,000 line item in public building fund. So do we lump it differently now?
So, Ms. Mock, members of council, what we did there is, I believe it was in 19 or 2020, we shifted that, we used to pay that right out of the general fund for the general fund buildings, and we pay that now out of our public building fund. So we did make that shift, and that's what you're seeing.
So it's just a different way?
Yeah, yeah.
And then it's, so if it's not there for like City Hall, but it is there for the library, that's because of the different funding sources?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none? So I guess in general, I would say that council is probably supportive of seeing the budget with the change of the retirement funding for our first responders. I don't think that, I'll just make another general statement, that I think all property taxes are important, and everyone that pays property taxes are important people in our community. And if we can find a way to get a property tax reduction, no matter how small it is, I think we should strive for that, which is why we go through this exercise of looking at the budget every year, trying to do the best we can to provide good value for the citizens of Grand Forks, and make sure that they recognize that we take every dollar that the people spend in our community, especially the dollars that they spend with us are very important to us, so. Any other comments or anything for the good of the order? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Veen, second by Cavami. No other comments? Everyone in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign for adjourn. Thank you.